Buenos, buenas, good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Guam Congress Building. The Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture is now called to order. Today is Wednesday, November 1st, 2023. The time is about 8:35 a.m. In compliance of the open government law, notices for this oversight hearing were published on Wednesday, October 25th, and on Sunday, October 29th, in the Guam Daily Post and on the Government of Guam Public Notice Portal. This hearing is being livestreamed on the Guam Legislature's YouTube channel. Notice was also sent by email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets on those same days. I will first introduce the agenda for today's oversight hearing and a summary of the agenda item before we receive testimony from the panel. After the panel testimony, we will open it up to questions and comments from the senators. An individual's testifying shall first be recognized by the chair before speaking and begin by stating their name for record-keeping purposes. We are here to listen and to accept testimony and I'm hoping that we can keep the noise levels down while people are testifying, so I appreciate your cooperation. I should thank my colleagues for attending this morning, beginning with the Vice Speaker, Tina Munya Barnes, Senator Duane San Nicolless, Senator Jose San Augustine, Senator Chris Duñez, Sisus Massey colleagues. All right, so our agenda item for this morning's hearing, it's the 8:30 a.m. hearing on the Oversight of the Guam Incestral Lands Commission with regards to land bank inventory, revenues and accounts receivables. At 9:00 a.m., there will be a hearing on Bill Number 184-37-COR, which was introduced by the Committee on Rules by request of Imago Hagan Guahan, the Governor of Guam, in accordance with the Organic Act of Guam. It is an act to authorize the Guam Incestral Lands Commission to sell or lease lots 2453, 2453-1, 2454, 2455, 2457, and 2457-1 municipality of Baragada to the Government of Guam at fair market value for use as a site of a new medical complex. So we'll begin now with the first agenda item, which is the Oversight of Guam Incestral This oversight was called today to discuss the land bank inventory, the revenues and the accounts receivables. And we had asked about beneficiaries of the land banks, any licenses or access to unleased land bank properties, properties that are non-revenue generating, previous solicitations and responses, and methods of determining fair market value and in regards to zoning. We sent invitation today to Guam Incestral Lands Commission. If the Director, please join us, and the Chairman, and if there's any other member from the Guam Incestral Lands Commission, please join us on the table. In 1999, the Government of Guam transferred former Spanish Crown lands and other non-incestral lands to the Guam Incestral Land Bank. Guam Incestral Lands Commission was mandated by law to manage the lands and develop them if necessary to the highest and best use. Resulting income was to be used to compensate those dispossessed ancestral landowners whose properties were returned to the Government of Guam but kept for Guam use instead of being returned to the ancestral landowners. 21 GCH, Chapter 80, Section 80104E states "Land Bank." "The Commission shall take title as trustees of former Spanish Crown lands and other non-incestral lands that are conveyed by the federal government to the Government of Guam after the effective date of this act on behalf of ancestral landowners who by virtue of continued government of Guam benefit use cannot regain possession or title to the ancestral lands. The Commission shall establish a Guam-based trust to administer all assets and revenues of the land bank of the aforementioned lands and manage the lands and act as the developer of the lands if necessary to the highest and best use. The Commission shall establish rules and regulations pursuant to the administrative adjudication law for the Guam-based trusts. The resulting income shall be used to provide just compensation for those dispossessed ancestral According to the Guam Incestral Land Commission files, GIDEA assisted to identify 528 lots within 6,196 acres that were transferred to the Commission for return to original landowners or to be held in the land bank inventory. Of these properties, approximately 1,888 acres were identified as Crown or non-incestral lands to be retained in the Commission's land bank inventory. Seventy-seven acres of non-incestral lands in the land bank have been leased or licensed. Let's welcome Senator Chris Barnett as well. The remaining 4,308 acres have been returned and 1,659.91 acres on 108 unclaimed lots are waiting to be returned to the original landowners. The last return of ancestral land to the original landowners was November 2022 when the Commission returned 4.97 acres in the municipality of Asan to the estate of the original landowner. There is still a list of approximately 1,659.91 acres or 108 unclaimed lots of various sizes in the Commission's land inventory waiting to be returned to the original landowners. Of the remaining 108 lots, some are pending the completion of documents to process the return of the property to the estates of the original landowners, but the majority remain unclaimed and are pending research to determine ostensible ownership. And notices inviting the heirs of ostensible landowners to file a claim have not been successful. These are the information from previous oversight hearings. In an effort to determine the impact on the taxpayers of Guam and ancestral claimants as well as the viability of proposed options for funding, we asked in April the Guam Incestral Lands Commission and BBMR for information on potential beneficiaries, original landowners that fell into the different classes of claimants according to the law. At that time, Guam Incestral Lands Commission said it was unable to determine the total amount of fair market value of the properties requested since many of these properties are unknown. Appraisals are needed for properties that were returned but kept by GovGuam and will most likely not be returned. The status of properties returned by the Organic Act is unknown, however, those that were acquired from the federal government and not returned to ancestral landowners may have been used for schools and other public uses or sold for homesteading purposes with first priority given to those whole lands were taken by the federal government. Fair market value at the time when GovGuam received control of the property of the lots that were returned to GovGuam but retained for an existing public use and lots that were returned to GovGuam but will be retained by GovGuam for public beneficial use. GLC's response was that it was not aware of any appraisals that were conducted for those properties under BRAC. Properties returned under Public Law 103-329 requires the USGSA to conduct appraisals of the property to be transferred, however, GALC does not have a copy of the appraisals. Estimated amount that must be deposited to the land bank to meet annual payments for each class of claimants. The last, their response was the last triennial valuation was conducted in 2014. Another was not conducted after 2014, possibly due to funding and that GLC could propose that the next triennial appraisal could be used as the basis for value. The applied result of triennial valuation is the assessed value for real property tax purposes, however, GovGuam could also use the appraised value of the land as vacant lots for compensation purposes. A recent GIDEA report, date October 6th, 2023, shows that Ancestral Lands Commission is owed over $2 million in outstanding rent, to which one commissioner expressed concern stating that of the nine tenants, over half are quote grossly delinquent. Outstanding tenants owe rent as high as $1,717,0067, $288,062,699. A report as of September 25th shows that GALC has over $16 million in its account, much of which came from the AT&amp;T settlement. All right, Mr. Birch, the executive, I'm sorry, I'm going to begin with the chairman. Mr. Chairman, you could please introduce yourself for the record and if there's any other commissioners here, please let us know.
Buenos, Senator Turnai. Speaker and Senators, good morning. I'm Ronald Clavea. I'm the Chairman of the Ancestral Lands Committee. I have with me Director Birch and part of First Staff, Joey Young-Guerrero. And if you have any questions regarding today's issues?
I'm sorry, can you say that again, Chairman Clavea?
We have our land agent, Joey.
Joey, yes.
Yes, Joey, and our Director Birch. I think we don't have, I'm just the only representative today.
Thank you.
And we have other land agents in the back.
All right, you may proceed.
Yeah, I'll just go ahead and turn it over to our director now.
All right, Sisus Massey, Executive Director Birch.
Good morning, Madam Speaker.
Good morning.
Madam Vice Speaker, Senator San Nicolless, Senator San Augustine, Senator Duñez, and Senator Barnett. My name is John Birch. I'm the Executive Director of the Guam Incestral Lands Commission, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have. Madam Speaker, we delivered to your office the other day. We hope we fulfilled your requests for the information you requested. It was such a high volume of documents that we had to deliver to you on a flash drive and explain basically the issues that we have. And we gave you, I guess, every document that you wanted regarding leases, revenues, expenditures, land bank and beneficiaries. I attached a letter to it, and if you, and the letter pretty much informs you what is in the flash drive. If you want me to read that letter to you yesterday, I can do so, or I can just go straight into the question and answers. Madam Speaker, would you like me to read the letter? Would that accompany the flash drive to inform you of what the contents are, or would you prefer just to go straight into asking questions about specifics if you would like to hear
All right, if you could, we can take a one-minute recess and get copies of that for the senators.
Of the letter I sent you?
Yes.
Okay, you have it in your office plus the flash drive. The flash drive has so much information on it that it was too much to print, and up until about 4 o'clock yesterday, we were compiling it.
All right, yeah, so, okay, I'm going to ask my staff if they can make copies of the cover letter, the transmittal letter, so it shows what's inside the flash drive. And I guess if we could just ask you what, if what I stated as your inventory is still accurate?
Yes, yes, ma'am. It's the acreage of property, for example, total acres that we have. Joey, this will be the, including those that are not Crown lands, 1,888? We, yeah, we have like over 3,000 lots, and to me, I understand that to be about 1,888 acres. We have about $16.5 million in bank accounts spread out. Most of it is spread between various banks throughout the United States where it's insured up to $250,000. We try to limit the amount in each bank to assure that, that the various, whether it be the NCUU or the FDIC, that it would cover it 100%. The only one that's not covered fully is the bank account here at Coast 360. And for those other ones we've invested, we're earning between 5% to 8% interest. That takes a lot of work, but that's what is basically in the land bank as far as the inventory.
All right, and the revenue?
Yes, and the revenue is listed also. Total revenues collected or invested is about, oh, I have the exact number here, $16,622,377.46.
That's, that's the...
That's the current in the land bank.
That's the current balance.
Yes, that's the account balance itself.
But your revenue.
Yeah, and revenues collected monthly, you would like me to go through that from each?
I'd like to just know, yeah, what, what revenue you anticipate monthly and what, what I talked about earlier, the outstanding?
Yes, okay. Most of our tenants are on, on time with their payment of their revenues, and sometimes they're reported as arrears if they're a day or two late, but the great majority of them are on time. We do have problems collecting revenues from Northern Market and also from our WIC Department of Public Health, the WIC program, and also the Guam EPA. Now, with Guam EPA and WIC, their rent is subsidized through federal grants, and basically it's, they pay the rent as soon as they get the money on hand, and that's usually every quarter. So they might fall behind a month or two, and then they'll pay us a lump sum for the months past once the funds are received. And so that's the issue with the federal, I mean, with the federally funded grants. And we're trying to reconcile, we've worked out with Guam EPA that we'll reconcile their records with our records to find out if their, the payments or what we're attempting to collect from them is true and correct. The issue we have is with a small business, one of them is Trans Steel. He's already made an agreement, and he started making payments to pay down the arrears. Currently, he owes us $7,000, and he should pay that up, those arrears by, with, according to his plan, by about April or so of next year of 2024. The other one, the lion's share that we've been working on, and this is one that's been going on since the day they signed a contract with us, is Northern Market. And the board adopted, made a motion, and passed the motion. And Northern Market owes us about $1.7 million in arrears. The motion that was presented and passed by the board was one, to reject Northern Market's March 7, 2023 proposal for arrears repayment and rent modification. And also, the Commission is to adhere to the terms of the lease agreement, and that Northern Market is to settle arrears payments before the Commission is to have any discussions on rent modification. And written notice is to be given to Northern Market informing them that they have 15 to 30 days to cure the default, and Northern Market must make a substantial payment towards arrears within a reasonable timeframe or be declared in default. So we've been having discussions, continuing discussions with Northern Market and how to proceed with that. One of the main problems I have right now is that with a changeover in the Attorney General's office, this year, we've gone through three different AAGs who are not with us anymore, so I don't have an attorney assigned to my agency, and to proceed with this, I would need one. And I've made that request numerous times to the AG's office, and I've also informed the AG's office that there may be times that we have a conflict of interest, or they may have a conflict of interest with us because of certain cases that are, that might come up and some that have and that we objected to. And my understanding with our last AAG assigned to us, she said that our request is being considered, and it is there, but the decision was not made. But as of today, I don't have an attorney assigned to us by the AG's office, so I'm working on this with caution until I get legal assistance. This, these cases are extreme, and it should take more than just a layman's knowledge of the law to move forward in this. I do need legal assistance in our agency, so if you can do anything to help us with that, I very much appreciate that so we can move forward in this. But this was the decision, and the motion was made and passed unanimously by the Guam Incestral Lands Commission to collect those arrears.
All right, so the bulk of the arrears is, as I stated, 1.7 million for Northern Market.
Yes.
The rest are, you expect those to be paid because of the federal grants?
Yes, the federal grants, and we already have a payment plan for one, and he has been very good at catching up. There is also, we report in our reports even the Farmers Co-op, but the way it works out is we collect on the gross payments of their leases at the end of the calendar year, so they don't make a report to us or start, working of us to start making payments until about May of the following year, after the calendar year ended. So while we're reporting on things from, I think they, they paid up the previous calendar year, we're working on the one now, and for what we would call FY23, which ends the end of September, there's ends at the end of December, so we won't get that report until about April of next year, and we'll probably start receiving payments for this calendar year sometime next year. So in our reporting on this, it might appear that they're behind, but technically, legally, they're not, they're on time.
And so prior years are paid up?
Yes, yes.
All right, thank you. What about in August 9, your report stated that we were talking about the FY22 audit, you're meeting with Ernst &amp; Young and the OPA, that there is concern for doubtful debts or accounts receivable that are viewed as bad debt?
Yes.
Is that different than the 1.7 million? Is that something else?
That is mostly, yes, that, that is exactly on that issue, madam.
It's the same?
It's the same.
Okay, so that's the bad debt?
That's the bad debt, and we're trying to attempt to fix that, but we need legal counsel, whatever help you can give us. I mean, it costs money with our budget. Our budget this year was severely reduced, and I've only, we submit our budget allotments to department administration. I have budgeted only up to the third quarter. We're trying to assess if we have any lapses from previous years, but DOA would only accept up to the third quarter. If I don't find a way to bring money in or access more money out of the land bank, basically I close the door after the third quarter. I'll get back to you on that, that's another issue, but that's the issue I need to get resolved, and the other issue is legal counsel.
All right, and you currently have leases that, according to law, have been allocated towards, instead of into the land bank for beneficiaries that you're allowed to use it for operations?
Yes.
Those are the...
The Polaris properties.
Pardon?
The Polaris properties and for FY, for this fiscal year now, for FY24, 50% of AT&amp;T. If we were to be given 100% of the AT&amp;T lease, that would take care of my issue with funding. That would carry us through. But then, of course, for legal assistance, unless the Attorney General signs us an attorney or we get an independent counsel, we need funding for that to move forward on this issue with Northern Market.
Right, are these Polaris Point properties able to be renegotiated? When, when will that time come?
Okay, with Matson, I believe we have a 50-year or 40-year lease with them, Quick Space, we all have an extensive lease. Smith Bridge, it's, we have another four years or so before that one expires, and Trans Steel is month to month.
All right, because these are Crown lands, is that correct?
Yes.
So these Crown lands, the income from these Crown lands is going towards operations, they're not going towards the beneficiaries?
They're not, yeah, they're not going into the land bank.
And now, we've added on, just for this fiscal year, half of the AT&amp;T proceeds, which are supposed to be going into your...
Yes, but the problem with there because, according to DOA, because the way the law is written, it's at half, it did not give a specific amount, they're not honoring that, and we're, we did not submit that 50% in, so we need to put an exact number according to DOA.
As you know, from our budget, yeah, we're very, I'm concerned with continuing to take from what the proceeds are supposed to go towards the beneficiaries for operations, and so, okay, so you're saying 50 years on Polaris or 40 years, and then one is four years? Those are the only leases that might be up for renegotiation?
Yes, and AT&amp;T is not at the Polaris area, but their lease is up September of 2024, and we're currently working on that. It seems that AT&amp;T had a misunderstanding that the way the lease agreement was signed is that they were given nine successive renewals. That's not allowed by the procurement law. We need to, for any extension of their lease, we need to come to the legislature for that, and we plan to get that request to you before this calendar year is out, if you were to grant the extension for the AT&amp;T lease, because they are on a five-year lease right now. And if we don't get that, then we'll be submitting a determination of need, and we'll be have, we'll have to RFP the property, and that would put the AT&amp;T lease at, at risk.
Okay, thank you. All right, all right, and if we could just talk about, so are there other properties that you tried to solicit to lease out that was unsuccessful?
Maybe a few years back, two years or so, there were requests for property up in the Andes South area. We have about 390-plus acres there. Of course, Smith Bridge reached out because that is basically the triple-grade A coral, and they're running out of coral, they're digging around the island, what we call borrow pits or coral pits, and they were seeking property in that area, you know, to, to mine. And my Commission refused to use, to allow the property to be mined, so that, we were ready to go with the RFP until it was withdrawn by the Ancestral Lands Commissioners.
All right, what about any other Crown lands?
They've been maybe requests like from APL, and we showed, told them where the available lots were up at Nimetzel across top of the Marb. They weren't interested in that. They wanted something down close to Polaris, but there's, we don't have any properties available in that area, they're all leased out. We do have a few lots up across, you know, over 100-plus acres across top of the Marb, but they didn't like the idea that they'd have to go up the hill and drive down, it's, you know, it's kind of a slippery hillside, and it's also along the flight path of the, with the airplanes when they're landing.
All right, so what about the Commission? Has it solicited, I mean, these are people coming to you, but what about, is the Commission solicited for any of the other properties for interest?
No, we haven't put any out that we were interested in until I get clearance from my board that I'm allowed to go and solicit and place RFPs out for various properties until I get that. The board put a stay on it for a while, and that was voted on, and the stay has not been lifted until recently. One with Smith Bridge, where they were licensed down at Polaris for five years, and now the next one was basically with the properties identified to you for the medical complex.
All right. All right. So you haven't, well, on your properties, for example, Smith Bridge that you just recently leased out at Polaris Point, what, how did you determine the valuation?
We hired an appraiser and then we negotiated. We had an appraiser when we renewed the Matson lease and the appraiser came in with a value as far as fair market value. And then once that was established, then we started our negotiation and that is basically the base. And Smith Bridge came in offering higher than the appraised value. So what the appraised value is about 900 some per acre per month, Smith Bridge is paying us 1,100 per acre per month.
All right. Because the statute requires that the appraisal be, well, that the value of the property be the reasonably probable and legal use of vacant land or an improved property that is physically possible, appropriately supported and financially feasible, then that results in the highest value. So I'm just curious, I mean, how, and the different properties you are determining that? There's, the Appraisal Institute talks about the four tests, factors that an appraiser must consider when determining the highest and best use of a property, legally permissible, which, which uses are permissible by law, zoning and other land use regulations. Physically possible or constructing buildings on the side of a mountain or in the swamp probably aren't possible. Financially feasible, does the use of the property suit the demographics and market of the area well and maximally productive? Does the intended use optimize the potential of the land? So do you believe that you've optimized the potential of these lands that you're currently leasing out?
Yes.
All right. And so at a recent meeting, the commissioners approved an appraisal for the Adacau property proposed for the medical campus site. What is the valuation method of determining the highest and best use for that property and how will it distinguish between property in the area that is the same zone versus future commercial development in commercial zone or hospital zone or?
We hired an appraiser through Public Works and that's in progress right now. I don't have that information until the appraisal is completed. So we're depending heavily on that appraisal. We haven't gotten the results as of yet because the property, the size of the property makes it, you know, it takes, it's taken them time.
All right. And you estimated though at that meeting that the property could be sold for five to six million?
Yes.
And how does that compare to a lease for a commercial development at its highest and best used?
That was based, that comment was based on an appraisal done on properties nearby a few years ago at about, what was it, Joey, $25 a square meter for agricultural. Now it depends on what it would be zoned as. Currently the property is zoned agricultural, but we expect if we were to use that property for something else, we would go through a rezoning of the lots.
Right. But the statute says highest and best use. So for example, if you're proposing a hospital, it can't be built in an agricultural zone, the highest and best use, are you going to still go with agricultural zone pricing?
No, ma'am.
Okay. So we're expecting it to be the minimum five to six million?
That would be the minimum, yes, ma'am.
All right. Depending on the highest and best use proposed in the study?
Exactly.
All right. Do you, and so all of this is to know the amount of money that you have in your bank or your land, your trust and revenues expected and how that trust might be built because we have beneficiaries. So I just wanted to ask if you can give us a number of the, the total number of beneficiaries of the land bank at this time that you estimate?
What we do have, or what we can tell you is we have 3,000 lots that have beneficiaries until a definition is given to us, a clear definition of who our beneficiaries are.
Wait, what do you mean 3,000 lots?
Lots, properties, different lots, but when I say lots, I'm not talking about acreage. Some lots are larger than other lots.
All right. I'm talking about the crown lands, right?
Oh, crown lands.
So are you talking about dispersing property?
I thought you asked about beneficiaries.
Oh, I'm sorry. So you're talking about 3,000 lots that the government has kept?
Yes, that we're trying to find the ostensible landowners.
And we do not have a good list of that?
Until they come in, we don't know exactly who they are.
Okay.
Or we do? Okay, I'll let my land agent, Joey Leon Guero, explain that in greater detail.
I'd like to recognize Senator Tom Fisher as well. Thank you. Please proceed.
Sorry. Good morning, Madam Speaker. My name is Joey Leon Guero. I'm with Guam Incestral Lands Commission. So to answer your question regarding the eligible beneficiaries for the land bank trust, we based our, that definition on what the board came up with, what they drafted their, the rules and regulations to pay out these beneficiaries. So we identified about 3,000-plus lots and those lots, again, what Mr. Bird said, the information is voluminous. And so what we can use is the 1941 tax rule. We have also the land claims payees and we have the declaration of taking. So we do have, you know, an ostensible owner for those 3,000 lots. We do have a way to identify them. And those, that, those resources were provided in the thumb, the flash drive that we attached to the, to the director's testimony.
Is it reasonable to say that we're talking about at a very minimum 3,000 families who may have, the property actually would be going to heirs now?
Yes.
So hundreds, thousands actually, thousands of heirs. Okay. And these are, again, for everybody who's listening, these are first lots that were returned to the government of Guam but retained by the government of Guam for an existing public use. We need to compensate those people.
No, no, no.
Those are the 3,000 lots?
No. The board interpreted the law as lands returned or still kept by the federal government. That's why we have that amount. Again, and that's the issue that the board has with getting their land bank, the rules and regs finalized.
All right. Do you have a split of that number of the land that's been returned but retained by the government of Guam versus the land that has not yet been returned?
Yes, I do have that, but not, I didn't provide that, I don't have that with me right now, but I do have that information. And basically though, it's just, that would involve the Tezen Properties and the Army National Guard. Basically, if we're going to go with lands that were returned to Gov Guam but still kept, it would basically be those two parcels. So approximately.
Tezen plus the National Guard?
Plus the Army National Guard, which is across the street from the GMF post office.
All right. Thank you. That's it?
Off the top of my head, yes, that's all I can remember right now.
And you're going to provide us how many landowners you think those encompass?
Yes, ma'am, I can provide that to you.
All right, thank you. There are, the statute says that in the land bank will be deposited crown lands and other non-incestral lands. What are those? You could just remind us?
Okay. The crown properties are those properties that were ceded to the United States?
No, I mean the non-incestral lands.
On the non-incestral lands, those would be properties that were outright purchased and/or for whatever reason may not have been claimed by anyone else, but were not included as crown. And we see that as going back as far as 1898. We've done our due diligence whenever we try to identify properties as crown and/or ancestral using various methods of the tax information from 1941 to the cadastro maps and to maps that were created and as far as back as 1952. So there are times, for example, where property is going to be returned eventually, I believe it's on its way. Example I'll use is Tengisena Beach Park, not where the power plant is, but the beach park that was outright purchased by the federal government a few years ago and they returned that property to Gov Guam. While you may look back and find that they had an ancestral landowner, that landowner voluntarily sold the property, that now would be non-incestral. It became the United States property and then very shortly, I hope soon, it's on the list to be returned to Gov Guam. And then we would have to decide what would be the best use of that property.
All right. Do you currently own any of that type of property, non-incestral lands in your land bank? Yes?
Yes.
All right. That's part of the 1,000 acres that you told me earlier?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
All right. Okay. So crown lands plus non-incestral lands together are 1,088 acres?
1,800.
800, okay, thank you. And then at a previous hearing, you stated that the funds on the sale of the Adacau property could be used as seed money to purchase more property. And can you please explain the purchase of more property?
Oh, the Enabling Act for Incestral Lands gives us a lot of flexibility. And if we sell, we can, basically with the Enabling Act, we can also become developers other than just leasing and selling properties. We've been very careful of what we work on. So far we've pretty much, the bulk of what we've done is leased properties out. We have sold properties in the past. We have not developed. We've repaired properties that we have that has facilities on it. And right now, currently, we have our staff looking at repairing some of these facilities that were damaged by the recent typhoon. They're out there today inspecting the buildings where the Department of Public Health, WIC Program is at and the Guam EPA. Yesterday, we did inspections of the AT&amp;T properties and hoping to receive federal funds to repair any damage to those. So we try to look elsewhere when we're trying to repair these properties, but we're allowed to, by law, to do much more than lease. We can buy also. And it's just an example that if we sell property, we could turn around and buy property for, to replace it, to continue the land bank. So as far as leasing and making as much money as we can for the beneficiaries.
All right. So if we could use the example of the 6 million on the estimated sale of Adacau, for example, if it was zoned under an agriculture zone or agricultural valuing. Yet we have 3,000, according to your records, trust beneficiaries, that's actually 3,000 lots. So that means 3,000 base families, I'm going to call them, with many more heirs. Have you done any calculations as to how far this 6 million would go for that many people?
To be honest with you, Madam Speaker, it won't go far, not with that many people out there. We have to work hard. I've moved the money is around in the land bank. We're earning between 5% to 8% interest in those areas that we've invested. Other than the monies that are kept in our local financial establishment, Coast 360, that's earning less than 1%. Until my commissioners allow me to go further with investments, that's pretty much where we're going to be at. I don't move forward unless the commission votes and allows me to do so at each request.
Did you have a value in any of your previous solicitations or your previous offers from people to lease your land? For example, the one at Andi South, did you have a, did they propose a value?
They did propose.
Did it exceed $25?
Well, they, for Andi South, they were offering us about royalties, should they go up and they start harvesting the coral and selling it. I admit that, yes, the island is in dire need of some central location where these products could be accessed. I'm told that if we were to ship it in, it would probably cost four times the amount as if we were to go out and quarry it ourselves. That's part of the thing they offered. And they offered, they said, we would make even on a bad year, a million dollars a year if we were to base it on royalties and not a fixed lease. And I expect on a good year, especially now that we have the military buildup and they're far short of the raw materials they need, that we could make maybe double that amount. But then our concern is, will the land be usable at the end of all of this? And so that part of discussion went to having them terraced in such a way that the property could be used for housing after an estimated 20 years of quarries. So that, yes, that has been offered and basically that was the most reasonable offer we have for that property.
What was the amount?
A million dollars a year minimum during a bad year for over 20 years.
How does that compare to the $25 an acre? Is, was it per acre, $25 an acre was your estimate or per square meter?
Per square meter.
Square, okay. Did they give you a square meter estimate?
The other one was based on royalties, depending on the amount of coral that would be quarried.
Okay.
And that can go up and down depending on the business and depending on how many buildings are being built. And so, yeah, they're actively, the companies like Wine Rock Products, Smith Bridge, they're actively going out trying to get the raw materials they need. And right now they are digging small quarries everywhere throughout the island. You could just go on Google Earth and you could see it. They were asking us for our property that we have. I know they were going also for the Lahuna properties owned by CLTC, wasn't just ancestral lands.
Yes. I'm looking for a square meter valuation that they might have proposed.
We didn't get one for that, we didn't have it appraised.
All right.
This is simply an unsolicited offer and if that came through, we'd have to put it out, if my commission would allow us with the unsolicited offer, we would have to put a, place an RFP and open it to competitive bid. And that's where we would get the appraisals and that's where we would get the highest amount.
All right. Can you, can you remind us, what is your revenue that you're bringing in from your current leases? And because, well, I'm talking about the eight, the leases that are being used for operations. That's all the Polaris point.
I believe our leases for operations is just over 400,000. If we include the AT&amp;T, it would be higher, but DOA wouldn't allow us, so they allowed us to use up to 400, I mean, 400, I believe about 400,000, maybe 404,000 dollars out of that. It's, it's not enough to continue the operation. I don't know the amount, the exact amount offhand right now. And that's because we weren't allowed to calculate the 50% at AT&amp;T because it said, until we receive the funds, they will not give us credit for it. So AT&amp;T has been very good.
Do you receive those funds monthly from AT&amp;T?
Yes, AT&amp;T is one of the agencies that are on time.
So you receive it monthly, but they are not allowing you half of that every month?
Until we have it on hand. So I won't get that amount to them until about the third quarter and they'll probably give me operations.
Wait, why is that?
That's just the way DOA operates.
No, I mean, if you're receiving it monthly, you're not able to report that to BBMR monthly?
Not BBMR to DOA, to submit our request for allotments. We were removed from the allotment release of DOA a couple of years back.
Yes.
And now we report directly to DOA as far as our allotment releases. So until they see the sustained income, they actually want to see cash on hand. I do have that kind of money, I do have those funds in our CIT account. In our CIT account, I have over 900,000. But what they're looking at is sustained income. I mean, they want to show that income is constantly coming in, they want to see it on hand. And because AT&amp;T was not listed as part of the CIT account prior, only recently for FY24, they would not allow us to use an estimated amount, well, we actually know exactly what we're going to collect.
I know, but.
So I need an exact amount.
They can use the actuals after you receive it every month?
After I receive it, yes. That's what I plan to use.
Yes, Joey, Mr. Leon Guero?
Just to clarify, they also don't want to commit that funds because there's no guarantee that they will pay that amount? So that's one of the issues.
What about, what I'm talking about, after AT&amp;T pays you, why can't they commit those funds? That would be on a monthly basis.
Right. I'll still be short 100,000.
All right.
That would give us, you know, another, AT&amp;T gives us quite a bit of funding throughout the year.
Okay. Well, my concern of course, again, is that every dollar that we take and we use for operations out of these crown lands in revenue, we deprive of the beneficiaries.
I understand.
So I want to keep that to a minimum if possible and, and, yeah, that's why I'm asking about the renegotiation of those leases or, you know, what amounts you can bring in under Polaris if those were, you know, the best use you could get out of it?
Madam Speaker, we'll be sending you that request because AT&amp;T is, their lease will be up in a year, so we're not waiting till it expires, we're working on it now, knowing that it expires just about a year from today.
I'm just concerned because in one of your meetings, you stated that, that me, the speaker, supported Guam Incestral Lands operations to be 100% funded by the general fund. And that's not correct? And that's not correct at all. I do not want money taking, any more money taken out of the land bank for operations. I want that to be as minimal as possible. And I just, I just want the operations to remain as efficient as possible. Because the more money we take out of that land bank revenue, that's the only revenue you have so far, right?
Yes, but with the increase of 22% for staffing and all that, that, the costs have gone up. You know, people are getting increments every year. We had a 22% increase and I can't avoid that. So, it was beyond our control to keep it where it's at. We're not increasing the size and.
So we gave half of the AT&amp;T for this year, so hoping we can deal with that. Well, I'm sure the appropriations chair will talk to DOA.
We'll try to squeeze by, but it's going to be tight.
All right. Okay. So that is the status of the amounts that you have? The amounts that you expect to come in? Whether you have any solicitations on these properties expected? Was this Adakau property ever solicited?
No. And it's actually, the site location name is Eda Agaga. It's, Adakau is in the Manila area.
I'm saying Adakau because you used that in your meetings. But, okay, so, Eda Agaga, yes.
Yeah, I keep correcting everyone on that. For some reason, they think, but if you think of Adakau Elementary School, that's a few miles away from the lots and the properties.
So the lots that we're talking about, Eda Agaga, the site of the proposed medical complex in the governor's bill, have you received or solicited any other proposals for that property?
No.
All right. Okay. Colleague Senator, Vice Speaker. If you have any questions to come, this is, yeah, just on this ancestral land.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My dad would always say, "Moss money and get man finu tomorrow hit." And I, Malagodu para senador, tiutugun apomaket, gov maket estina tso tu. Ti malagodu bena puti un taotao un prohimu un kilisano. The gov manenya korosanu. No angipara be disidi esti para imalik itaota tasia. Todo itaota tasia. I just, I just wanted to make sure that I sat here so that I can hear all the, all that you have to say regarding the bill or not. I've been getting a lot of phone calls from both doctors and our, our manamko, especially from Aget. Say, "Boy gov tagu, Adakau paragow." And so, so right now, I would just like to hear what everybody has to say. So, I'm, I'm, I'm open to all the suggestions so that way we can move forward. Ta fanakumprendi that the, the CD hafa moss perce suz and moss dinanti para itaotas ya. Thank you, Madam Speaker. I have nothing further.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Duñez.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Today, I am here to listen. So I will have no questions. I will take in the information that all these wonderful people have come to present this morning. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Senator Barnett.
Just like to say, "Good morning to everyone and thank you for coming out." Thank you, Mr. Birch. I have no questions for this part of the hearing, ma'am.
Thank you. I'd also like to recognize Senator Teleptych. Senator, any questions for this panel?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good morning. And good morning to everyone that's here. Chairman Eklave, of course, Mr. Birch and Joey, and those who are here. Thank you so much for being here and providing this information. It's something that we should have, you know, I think, Mr. Birch, since you came in, how long now have you been sitting in this position at Ancestral Lands?
Three years.
Three now?
Yes.
In the three years, the Northern Company, I apologize for being late. I was at the dentist, but she allowed me to listen while my teeth were getting done and hearing what you had to say. So I, I stayed in step with what was going on. You mentioned a North, is it North Company that owns the 1-point?
Northern Market, yes.
Northern Market. Are you allowed to say who this is?
I'm like, what?
Are you allowed to say who owns Northern Market?
I remember who the majority shareholder is and who the representative. There's, I believe, about four owners to that property.
The main owner?
The largest would be Champ Koval.
Okay. And why was it delayed so long? You know, 1-point-something million in owing. Why was it delayed this long?
Okay, it's, this started since the first day of the lease signing. And what the Ancestral Lands Commissioner, and this has gone on for a decade already. They allowed the first two years, of course, to allow them to start up the business and move forward under, it started with Carlos Camacho, the developer. And everyone says his word is as good as gold out there. So they allowed him an opportunity to start up without paying any rent for a year or two, which is sometimes allowed when businesses are startup.
So the board approved that?
Yes, that was, I forget the exact date of the inception of that. I could search in my files here that I carried with me. But in general, I'll give you a short timeline of this. And things occurred. There were delays because of requirements by law. You know, they had to, at that time, get clearances from agriculture to make sure they can go in and dig up the sites from historic preservation. That caused a lot of delay and he lost the federal funding. The time lapsed and went in. So I'm assuming he went out to find investors to prop up the business and keep it moving. And, and it's, he did get, apparently, more people. That's when the majority shareholder came in. And then we got hit with the labor issue. We lost our H2 workers. They didn't have people available.
It sounds like Mr. Burn.
It just hit one after the other. And then we came down with COVID and we came down. And businesses pretty much came to a standstill. So, it just was a lot of bad luck with the timing.
Okay, so it sounds like, you know.
They have made some payments. They, they have.
Have they, okay, without an attorney? Because I do know that you mentioned you don't have an attorney.
Right.
Have they made, you know, out of good, you know, business sense or just keeping that piece of property by offering you and putting in writing a promissory note to be paying this off right away? Because it's obvious for the last two years, you've been bending over backwards for a company when, you know, your interest is in the landowners, the ancestral land commission, not helping run a business, but the land commission. So I'm just surprised that, you know.
We have been negotiating with them. They've been making offers, counteroffers, going back and forth. And like I said, in, they made the last offer that was denied by the commissioners. Was made, they made that in March 7. And in the minutes, I brought me, this decision was made on April 12 that they were going to reject Northern Market's March 7 proposal to pay the arrears prepayment. They also asked for a rent modification that we didn't agree with. Then the commission stated that we're to adhere to the terms of the lease agreement. Northern Market is to settle our arrears payments before the commission is to discuss or have any more discussions on rent modification. And written notice is to be given to Northern Market informing them that they have 15 to 30 days to cure the default. And Northern Market, in order to even start further discussions with the commission, they're to make a substantial payment towards arrears within reasonable timeframe. And substantial means, basically, what was made, an offer to the commission that they would pay a million dollars upfront. And for some reason, that did not occur. The commission agreed to that, that didn't occur. And that's why the commission made this decision. So if they did make that, and if they do make that payment, it'll bring them up pretty close and we could work with them. But unless they make a substantial payment towards the arrears, the commission decided not to. But the problem with that is, we don't have legal counsel with us now. And this is, if this goes forward, it will wind up in the courts and it will take years. And so, right now, with the budget that the commission has and because we don't have an attorney sign to us from the AG's office, we're unable, we're not able to hire our own attorney.
Mr. Birch, I know that I don't need you to repeat it because I did hear it earlier and I appreciate that. But you, you did mention there is $16 million in the account of the ancestral. Now, this $16 million, it's lockbox for what? Just to pay the, those who did not receive? Is, has there been any push from the board, Mr. Chair? I can even ask Mr. Chair, if there's been any push on board to use some of this money to hire an attorney? Because it's obvious that, you know, the AG's office right now is in dire need of attorneys and they're very shorthanded. Is there any possibility that you can use this money to get an attorney so you can get your books in order?
I, I think our director, that the legal, the legal aspect of what, of the, what that entails, it's complicated, very complicated. But definitely, we've, this issue with the legal counsel is just new.
Okay.
It's just, yeah, just, it's just recent.
It's just recent, but the.
Yeah, that, yeah, we did have a couple that volunteered or they're assigned to us temporarily. Is that right? With, with.
We lost Attorney Tough in January. And then Attorney Finney was assigned to us right after. But because there was a conflict of interest between us and collecting from Guam EPA, and she represents Guam EPA, she was replaced with Attorney Miller. We lost Attorney Miller. She went to Revenue Tax. And since then, we have not had one assigned to us. So, this started actually in January when we have not had constant legal advice to move forward in issues like this.
Well, you know, you know, Mr. Birch, there is like, Rev and Tax has two attorneys. You know, other agencies have their own attorneys. I don't see why the ancestral lands should not have their own attorney and not rely on the Attorney General's office. So, I encourage you and whatever I can do to help you so that you can get an attorney onboard to get your books in order and those who are reneging on their agreements in your, in your contracts, then please, you know, by all means, let us know what we can do so that you can get that attorney that's designated and all solely for the ancestral lands to help you. Because I do understand your issues, you know, the problems that you have, the roadblocks in front of you. So this is one thing that we can address right away. And I, and I hope that we can, you know, Madam Chair, if there's any way we can provide any leeway to give them to utilizing, it is 16 million in the bank, right?
Yes, over 16 million.
I don't think we need, close to any of that now to get an attorney. So, I don't know, it's limited to how it's being spent, but this is an emergency at this point.
Well, I'd like to add something real quick. We, we, in the beginning, but back in 2004, I believe, we did have the issues with legal counsel way back then. We did have private counsel and then we did have an issue with the newly-elected AG at the time that they should be the one to represent ancestral lands. So we were operating without, for maybe a few years, without legal counsel.
Wow, that's disappointing.
So right now, the AGs is, and that was just the same AG, is saying that, you know, that sue, that they, they represent ancestral lands. So, if they allow us, I don't think we'll have a problem, you know, putting out a solicitation, an RFP for our own legal counsel.
Sounds good. That sounds like a plan. That's, that's one way we can jump the hurdle and move forward. So I appreciate that.
Senator, one of the things that limits us in, in that is not just the funding, but also the law. The law requires us that we go through the Attorney General's office, that they are our legal representative for the government of Guam.
Well, it's obviously, that law is not helping at all. So that we can try and change that law to allow you more flexibility on your end. Because this is the people's land. You know, we're, we're doing an injustice to our ancestors by not doing this for them. So, let's, let's move forward. Anything else, Chairman Eklave, you wanted to add?
Yeah, I'd just like to clarify that we did have Finney, right? And Attorney Miller at least sit in on our few meetings, the last few meetings we had.
Finney is a good friend and she volunteered to sit in on a couple of our sessions, but she's not assigned to us. It's just out of the goodness of her heart that she felt that we're out there and we're discussing legal issues without any legal support. So, I really appreciate what she's done. And I know that they're overstretched. They need help, so they can help us. You know, we depend on the AG's office for a lot.
Thank you so much for that. It's a huge choke in, you know, that's happening to your agency. So, let's try and get that. That's, that's all I have and I appreciate all the hard work that you're doing with the limited resources that you have. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator. Mr. Director, Mr. Chair, who won the bid for the appraisal of the Eda Agaga property?
It's, first name is Surety. Such appraisal company, I'm not sure. I forget right now what the exact name is. We can get that for you later today.
Okay, thanks. And in your records, it says that you were asking for reimbursement? From, who will reimburse you for that appraisal?
We got the reimbursement from the governor's office.
You received it already?
Yes, we're not using land bank money for this.
All right. And can you just describe, what is Northern Market? Is it undeveloped land right now or is it developed?
It's located almost directly across the GRMC. It's undeveloped. Well, it's, it's cleared property up there and it is prime lot. It's about 13 acres? Yeah, it's about 13 acres of prime land. So I don't see Northern Market giving it up easily because that's an area of high, I expect it, high and fast growth. So I expect that future negotiations, that they are willing. And I know that if we can get the right thing working, the project will move forward. They've shown interest in continuing this. It's just the back and forth negotiations. And of course, while they have legal counsel, we're going into this without legal counsel.
All right. And how, how big is that property?
13 acres.
All right. Is that on the corner?
It is a corner lot.
All right. Thank you. Across GRMC?
Yes.
All right.
It's right on Marine Drive.
Okay, thank you. Senator Sinocstein, you weren't here. If you have any questions for the panel?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Very short and very simple. I, I, I'm hearing about the money you got. I'm curious to know what's on the thumb drive. If you can provide us a copy, write me a copy of the appropriation operation of the government of Guam, I appreciate it, okay? Whatever you gave the speaker, I'm asking for a copy directly.
We'll send it to you today.
And on another note, you've identified some shortfall you have with getting an attorney because the AG is not responding? I recommend you take a look at the law and you tell us, you recommend to us what changes you want in the law. Don't expect us just because we're here, we're going to, we're going to understand what you need. Put it in writing, then send it to us. Then let's figure out how we can make it work for the benefit of your agency. Because if any other agency was to request that they're having problems with AGs, all I'm going to say is, is, look at the law. Even though the law says the AG is supposed to represent, well, if he's not doing it and you're, and, and you have issues, then bring it up. Put it in writing, John, and then we work from there. Right now, this hearing is only going to go as far as we want it to go. And on everything else you're doing, if you're dealing in any leases, get the biggest bang for your dollar. Put for bought, okay? And then let's, take a look at the law because you mentioned you can't use your, there's any of your, your $16 million? Well, then take a look at the law. What flexibility do you need so that we can address that? Because $16 million is a lot of money. And how much do you generate a year? How much does the ancestral generate a year? Because $16 million just didn't drop from the sky. So how much do you generate?
In our, in rent, in lease payments, we generate close to a million dollars a year. And in interest, because we started investing now outside of this island in various banks and financial institutions throughout the US. More recently, within, since February to now, we generate over 300,000 for the land bank. So yes, we're increasing that dramatically.
What, you said a million and you're investing outside. What do you generate a year? 1.3?
I estimate for this year, we'll probably get about 1.3 million.
Okay. I'm, I just tried to be very specific, so I'm not trying to do the addition. You should do that. You should already know all that. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Fisher? All right, thank you. All right, thank you. Again, thank you to all of you here to, um, update us on the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission, properties, revenue, the Land Bank, the trust, and the beneficiaries. Uh, I will also provide this flash drive to, or copies of the flash drive to my colleagues. And they have a copy of the cover letters as well, indicating what's in the flash drive. All right. Situs Masih. That will conclude this oversight hearing on the Guam Ancestral Lands. We're going to move on now to the other agenda item. This is Bill number one eight four dash thirty seven COR, introduced by the Committee on Rules at the request of Magahagan Guahan, the Governor of Guam, in accordance with the Organic Act of Guam. It's an act to authorize the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission to sell or lease lots twenty four fifty three, twenty four fifty three dash one, twenty four fifty four, twenty four fifty five, twenty four fifty seven, and twenty four fifty seven dash one, municipality of Baragada, to the government of Guam at fair market value for use as a site of a new medical complex. And I want to clarify that this is, this is not the hearing on, uh, the bill to cite the medical complex in Tumuning. That hearing is happening on November twentieth. Uh, so this hearing is limited to, uh, this bill, Bill one number eighty four. This bill was introduced on October eleventh and subsequently referred, uh, to the Committee on Health, Land Justice, and Culture on October eleven. We invited for feedback on this bill specifically Guam Power Authority, Guam Water Works, Department of Public Works, Chamor Land Trust, Department of Land Management, the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission, and Matrix. We also invited Matrix to give us a presentation prior to this hearing, and they responded that they were unable, they were off island, they're not available. Bill one eighty four proposes to authorize the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission to sell or lease the lots mentioned earlier, commonly referred to as the Adakau Site, according to the bill, to the government of Guam at fair market value for use as a site of a new medical complex. And I know that we have, uh, Director Birch has clarified that we should refer to this property as Eda Agaga, or I think some people refer to it as, as part of the Lalu area as well. But we, we will try to refer to it during this hearing as Eda Agaga so that we do not confuse it with the Adakau property that we discussed in previous hearings that is located further north and that was studied by Matrix.
Yes.
This one is not part of the Matrix study. Under the bill, the Ancestral Lands Commission would be authorized to approve the sale or lease of the lots following the completion of a survey and appraisal of the lots without further legislative approval of the terms, including the length of the lease or the value of, of the lease or a sale. In this scenario, the Director of the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission would be, um, guiding the ancestral lands, of course, with the commissioners on their decision making as to all the terms in the lease. Under the bill, sale of the identified lots must be at fair market value as determined by the appraisal, but no details on the methodology for valuation are provided. This is one thing that I want to talk about today, because in other, uh, valuations of land, for example, for Chamor Land Trust property, we have find, found an issue with going strictly by, uh, a determination of fair market value versus what the property is actually able to obtain from, from the certain types of development. And we want, of course, for these agencies to receive full value. So the, uh, I'm concerned about the undervalued leases, and that's why we're talking about some of the appraisals, uh, methodology. It's unclear in the bill if the statutory mandated highest and best use for the Guam Ancestral Lands will be determined based on current zoning or potential zoning. As we heard earlier, this land is currently zoned agricultural. The bill also provides that GIDA will have cognizance or jurisdiction after the property is sold or if the property is leased. There's no timeframe nor any other terms for the lease that are included in the bill, um, although we have heard publicly that, uh, the governor wishes to purchase the property. The bill contains an exemption from two GCA two one oh seven, which provides that, uh, no such bill authorizing the transfer of land or leasing of land may be considered by the legislature on third reading unless accompanied by two appraisals on all land concerned, appraised for highest and best use, regardless of zoning, from two separate licensed real estate appraisers, one of which appraisals is not more than twelve months old and which appraisals are paid for by the transferee. So in the bill, that provision of law would be waived. Uh, the Guam Economic Development Authority's contractor, Matrix, was tasked with developing a medical campus through nine task orders. There was a requirement for at least two presentations on the medical campus to policymakers and to host at least two forums for the medical and public health industries due in late August twenty twenty two. There has been no presentation to the Guam Legislature and to apprise the legislature of, of those plans. And so I did invite Matrix prior to this hearing to come in at, uh, October thirty one yesterday, but they, they responded to my letter that they were not available. They were off island. Um, in August twenty twenty three, the Office of Public Accountability found that GIDA was not in compliance with Guam procurement law and regulations in its procurement of Matrix, uh, task orders for this medical complex. Contrary, um, the, the bill does not contain the plans for the medical campus at Eda Agaga property. It only authorizes the Ancestral Lands Commission to lease or sell the property. We have requested from the, the governors and from the hospital and from GIDA any documents relating to, uh, plans for, uh, partnership with the federal government or the Department of Defense as to, um, what is referred to in the Matrix documents as a VA facility. And we have not received response to those except for requests for a longer, um, amount of time to respond to those. And although we did see the governor had a, a verbal response to the media, that there are no such documents, that these are all verbal discussions. But we are looking for these to, to determine what Matrix is referring to when they say VA facility. After, um, we've had several oversights regarding citing for the hospital, including the most recent one was on Ipau Point. So, and as I said, there will be a hearing on another bill to cite the hospital in Tumuning. Uh, but there were, uh, many discussions in that Ipau Point. Uh, and I want to make sure that today we're very clear that the, the legislature years ago passed a law that enabled the government and the governor and GIDA to build a hospital on government of Guam land. And it also, uh, had funding authorization in there. Subsequent to that, there was a bill passed by the Guam Legislature to require that any federal lease or lease by the government of Guam of federal property would require legislative approval. That bill passed. And it was only subsequent to the passage of that bill that the public became aware, after meetings with the governor and several senators, the public became aware that there was a proposed lease for Eagles Field. The proposed lease for Eagles Field that AG determined, the Attorney General determined that that could not go forward without legislative approval. The legislature overrode the governor's veto of the bill requiring legislative approval of a federal lease in general. But at no time was the Eagles Field lease proposed to the legislature, requested approval from the legislature. In fact, we invited the governor to present that to us so we could have a discussion specifically on Eagles Field. And so I just want to put that on the record, because there's a lot of, um, media statements saying that the legislature killed Eagles Field. And I, I want facts. This is what we're trying to do here, is get the facts on the table, lay the facts out, so that we can have a good discussion about what is the best site and how do we move forward? And not to have to spend our time debating or correcting the actual truth. So the Eagles Field lease was never proposed to the legislature. It's not killed by the legislature. The governor told me after Typhoon Mawar that she was going to pursue the Eagles Field lease, and then she didn't. I, I didn't get an explanation why. I did get told that she's going to pursue these properties now. So that's why we are here on this bill. All right, we have maps of the properties that we're talking about in the bill. We could put those up? If, uh, AV, can we put up the maps? Okay. Yeah. All right. All right, I'm gonna wait for those maps. And, um, all right. The maps are gonna show the location of the property and the proposed rights of way. Um, I want to note that the medical campus plan that was developed by Matrix for at least two million dollars or one point six million dollars, uh, contains a disclaimer that states, quote, "Matrix Design Group was not responsible for identifying alternative sites for the new public hospital and medical campus, developing site selection criteria, providing the data for assessing site alternatives, and selecting the preferred site. These tasks were the responsibility of the government of Guam agencies," unquote. The Eda Agaga or Lalu property is different from the Adakau property that was in the medical campus plan. But it is, um, located, uh, closer to the Eagles Field property, which approximately, approximately one mile north of the Eagles Field property that was assessed by Matrix. We have used the medical campus plan, um, to, I guess, to compare now. Since we have no, um, assessment of this particular property, we are using the medical campus assessment of Eagles Field as a similar assessment, uh, to compare to other properties that were proposed, such as Ipau Point. Matrix also stated, quote, "That Gov Guam coordinated all the data and alternative site options involved in the site selection process for the public hospital and medical campus. The Gov Guam agencies involved in the analysis and assessment of the alternative included GIDA, Department of Land Management. Under the auspices of government of Guam, available vacant public lands were analyzed and ranked based on factors that included size, jurisdiction, conveyance method, main and secondary access roads, topography, current utility infrastructure, current uses and planned uses." Gov Guam, uh, selected fourteen vacant public land sites for site assessment. And we have reviewed, that's unquote. We've reviewed these lands, and almost all of them are either in the inventory of the Ancestral Lands Commission or the Chamor Land Trust, except for one that was part of the University of Guam's, uh, conservation area. As was discussed at the Ipau Point hearing, uh, there were comparisons made in drive time studies uh, between Eagles Field and Ipau Point. And twenty two point four percent of the population, or thirty five thousand six hundred eighty six people are within ten minutes of Ipau Point. And sixty six point seven percent of the population, or a hundred and six thousand people, are within twenty minutes of Ipau Point. For the Eagles Field property, only ten point six percent of the population are within ten minutes of Eda Agaga, or, or actually Eagles Field. And fifty six of the pop, percent of the population, or eighty nine thousand people, are within twenty minutes. And this is a difference of sixteen thousand people that would be closer to Ipau Point. The main access to the property that we're discussing is Route fifteen. We're not aware of any secondary access. The plans for Eagles Field included almost one hundred million dollars in estimated infrastructure, preliminary infrastructure costs, including, uh, roads at an estimated amount back then of twenty six million, sewer, power, and water, one hundred million. The bill does not specify funding for the infrastructure or where it will come from. If, the infrastructure at Ipau was estimated to cost twenty million for water, power, roads, and sewer. Infrastructure upgrades for the Eagles Field property could possibly include widening the road to six lanes uh, over two to three years, build a power substation one year for design, two years for construction, water storage tank, water pump and well, new GWA well to be drilled off campus, significant upgrades to wastewater. And they discuss the land use and zoning compatibility, and it appears from a zoning map in the medical campus plan that it is zoned as military lands. And additionally, um, we would like to confirm today whether the next rad radar vicinity, which is on Eagles Field, would impact the development of this site and require some restrictions, such as height, as we had heard about for the Eagles Field discussion. Do we have the maps? Are the maps ready? Do they have it? They don't have it. If you could please confirm with AV. Thank you. I know, but I want to put it up for everybody. Yeah. Yeah, we have it. Again, I submitted a FOIA request, GMH and GIDA, and just a letter to the governor, asking for communications or documents that outline plans, discussions, or collaborations with the federal government regarding veterans facilities to include information related to whether these facilities are considered a government of Guam project, or a US Department of Veterans Affairs facility, or a Department of Defense undertaking. Information that includes any lobbying, commitments, agreements, or proposals associated with this funding, especially in relation to the medical facility or medical campus. A detail of the allocation of the funds specifying how much will be dedicated to the medical facility or medical campus. Information on obligations or conditions that the people of Guam or the government of Guam would be under if this funding is secured. Relevant documentation or communication related to negotiations with or offers made by the Department of Defense to build a hospital for the people of Guam, or to provide financial support for a hospital or medical facility to be managed by the government of Guam. There, here are the maps. All right, so the blue line on this map is Route fifteen. And the white shaded area with stripes through it, that, those are the lots that are being proposed in this bill. That's what we're referring today as Eda Agaga. Is this, is this correct, Mr. Birch?
Yes, Madam Speaker, it's correct.
All right. All right, if, there should be another map? Is, is there another map showing the rights of way? Here. This shows the different lots, so there are different lot numbers involved. This shows the different ones. This is the area. Again, the bright white, dark white line is Route 15. There should be one more map, please, that shows the rights of way proposed. All right. If we could get the rights of way map, I'd like to focus on that one.
Madam Speaker, if you can, can we ensure, make sure that our colleagues have a copy of the map so we know what we're talking about?
Yes.
Then they keep looking up because after a while, the neck's gonna hurt.
All right. I'm going to proceed while we're waiting for those maps. In the Matrix report, they refer to VA facility on the campus. And they highlight, well, on their drawings, it says approximately 200,000 square feet. And that would be built in the third phase of the development of the project. In 2020, the Army Corps of Engineers estimated the cost of a new hospital would be 743 million. They stated in their assessment that they were not referring or including in that cost any cost of land transfer, upgrades to infrastructure or feasibility study that addresses potential impacts on patient travel to a new facility. The estimate does not address potential clinical space deficiencies nor meet the future end state of clinical services that must be resolved prior to design. And that estimate was 743 million. With a cost of 100 million, according to the medical campus plan, that would, that would leave costs at approximately 843 million just for the hospital alone, which not, does not account for inflation since 2020 here, going forward. We do not have any figures that include the cost of the additional veterans administration facility, the public health, behavioral health, assisted living facility and medical provider offices, or the helipad. We confirmed in the last hearing that the CDC lab will not be on this campus since they are securing a site in Manila adjacent to University of Guam. However, the medical campus plan states that the estimated cost of developing the new hospital related medical facilities and the required infrastructure is between 800 million and 1 billion. Guam Water Works has advised that they have not undertaken any research or study into easements or access required for potential infrastructure that would be needed to serve a medical campus at, at this proposed site. On July 26, 2023, the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission passed a motion to pass Resolution Number 2023-003 for the appraisal of these lots for the Guam 21st Century Healthcare Center project. And we've heard earlier testimonials to they were already reimbursed for the cost of the appraiser from the governor's office. On October 11, 2023, the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission approved a license pending legal review to GITA for 12 months, beginning November 1 and ending at midnight on October 31, 2024, without cost, to allow the licensee to perform all environmental investigations, studies, plans, analysis, surveys, soil tests and the like to determine the condition and feasibility of locating a medical complex on the property. The director recommended the licensee be DLM since GITA is Ancestral Lands Commission's property manager. But I think in the resolution, it confirms GITA is, is going to be the one, the licensee of this property. All right, here we go. Thank you. So this is the map. I believe we've received this map from GWA. But there, the red lines, if you look at the heavy red lines, those are, according to the legend, 40-foot wide proposed easements. If we could have the Director of Land Management to please join us? And so we are going to hear testimony from all those who've signed up, but before we start, I just, I just want to confirm with this, the lot that we're looking at, the lots that we're looking at and this proposed easement. If either of you, Director Birch or the Director of Land Management, Mr. Borja, can confirm, do we currently have an access road to this property?
Yes.
Thank you. Where is that depicted?
That would be, right where it says Route 15. You come in there in the bottom line of Lot 2481. And by the way, Lot 2481 is not in the bill. And then you make a sharp 90-degree turn north and that easement goes all the way up.
But the easement from Route 15 is Government of Guam?
It's Ancestral Lands, yes.
It's Ancestral Lands. Is this a dedicated easement or you're going to make a dedicated?
Some are dedicated and, well, and there are other proposed easements. I don't see that, the actual proposed master plan up there. The yellow is dedicated, you could see that, and then the red lines are the proposed easements. We're checking on, we actually have here a copy of the master plan.
All right, and so the dedicated easement, the property surrounding it is owned by the Ancestral Lands?
Some have been returned to the original landowners. And those that are, yeah, the dedicated one that you see in yellow up there, yes, that is. And we've placed the actual easement, we opened it almost a mile in, we cut it open and one of the ancestral landowners that we returned property to surveyed the center line of the, of the access easement and we had it cut open about a mile in where you could actually drive in, Madam Speaker, if you wanted, if you're interested in seeing the property. So it is easily accessible at this point. So the yellow line that you see coming off at the very bottom, going into that, coming off Route 15, that, that prop, that actual easement has been opened. The red lines are proposed and much of that would go through Gov Guam property. So we could always reconfigure that, I guess, in the future. It's a, on the proposal of our tentative master plan.
What master plan are you referring to? Is this an ancestral land master plan or the medical?
It's included in that flash drive.
Okay, so it's an ancestral lands master plan, but it's not included in the medical campus plan right now? Because this property was not studied in that medical campus. All right, okay, so are we able to make copies of that? If you don't mind, we can provide that to the senators. Thank you.
Madam Speaker, it is in the flash?
I know, it's in the flash drive, but we did not distinguish that.
Okay.
Thank you. Can we make copies of this map, please? Thank you. All right, so we will proceed with testimony. I know there are several people signed up. We, we will accept your testimony first, Mr. Birch, and then Mr. Borja, and then I know there are some people who have to leave early, but we'll try to get everybody in. Please proceed.
Okay, thank you, Madam Speaker and Senators. Thank you. My name is John Birch. I'm the Executive Director of the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission. And I thank you for granting me this opportunity to present this testimony in support of the Governor's Bill 184-37-COR, which proposes the acquisition of lots for the Guam 21st Century Healthcare Center project. I would like to address the key points outlined in the bill and emphasize the vital importance of this project for the future of healthcare services in our community. First and foremost, it is crucial to acknowledge that the Guam Memorial Hospital, the island's sole public hospital, is no longer suitable for long-term use and requires extensive repairs. According to the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, the cost of repairing the existing hospital would exceed the cost of constructing a new one at a different location. In light of this, the proposal for a new medical complex encompassing hospital, healthcare, healthcare agency facilities, and veterans' care is a commendable initiative to provide modernized healthcare services and strengthen Guam's public health system. Governor Leon Guerrero and Department of Land Management have made significant efforts to identify suitable land for the new medical complex. Factors such as size, location, proximity to utilities, development constraints, population density, traffic conditions, and arterial road access were carefully considered during this process. After thorough evaluation, six lots in the municipality of Baragata were identified as the most suitable site for the new medical complex. It is important to note that these lots are considered Spanish Crown or non-ancestral lands, meaning they are not eligible for ancestral return. Additionally, the commission reviewed and cleared the properties based on available records and information, which showed no ancestral owners or claims associated with the six lots. The GLC Board of Commissioners has approved the sale or lease of the identified lots via Resolution Number 2023-003. The resolution designates approximately 101 acres of Spanish Crown non-ancestral lands in the commission's land bank inventory, specifically lots 2453, 2453-1, 2454, 2455, 2457, 2457-1, and Lot 2481 in the municipality of Baragata, Manila, as available and designated property for the Guam 21st Century Healthcare Center project. The commission's board has also authorized a survey and appraisal of the requested property, which are ongoing. The initial request for the project included seven lots totaling a little more than 101 acres of GLC property. However, due to discovery of ancestral claims on one of the lots, that's Lot 2481, it was not included in the Governor's Bill for the GLC lots. Lot 2481 is also Spanish Crown non-ancestral lands, and claims were filed by five separate individuals, possibly members of a single family asserting that their relatives once occupied the lot. Upon reviewing the records, the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission found that these claims did not align with the information on file. Recently, it has been verified that these claims are not valid. The GLC understands the significance of ancestral claims and is committed to ensuring a thorough and accurate resolution of such matters. Considering this new information, I kindly request that you consider amending Bill Number 184-37-COR to include Lot 2481 in the list of lots for negotiations. Given the commission's verification that the ancestral claims on Lot 2481 are not valid, it would be appropriate to include this lot in the bill for the medical complex. In conclusion, the proposed bill addresses the urgent need for a new medical complex in Guam, providing modernized healthcare services, complying with accreditation standards and strengthening the island's public health system. The identified lots in the municipality of Baragata, Manila, under the jurisdiction of the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission and approved for sale or lease via Resolution Number 2023-003 offer a suitable location for this significant development. The streamlined negotiation process authorized by the bill will expedite the establishment of the new medical complex, ensuring the efficient use of resources. And also, Madam Speaker, what led us towards this is that your recommendation in a June, April of this year, we had a public hearing. And Ancestral Lands decided to strongly recommend this to the governor based on your recommendation at the time. I believe it was the public hearing on April 23, 2023, that this would be a great alternate site for the medical complex. Well, thank you for your time and consideration. I urge you to support the Governor's Bill Number 184-37-COR to pave the ways for improved healthcare services and a stronger public health system in Guam. Sisusmasi.
Sisusmasi, Mr. Birch. And I know you've been sending that around, but I want to clarify, we were talking about leasing land from Department of Defense as opposed to using land that we on the government of Guam or ancestral lands owns. And I was very much in favor of using property that we owned and could control after we built a hospital on it. So yes, I am in support of that, but whether this is the best location or not of, of your inventory, that's what we're trying to determine here and the cost that it's going to take.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. All right, so Mr. Borja, you're not signed up for testimony. Did you want to provide testimony?
I'm open to questions and I, I just want to make one comment on the Matrix report. And this actually has to do with the place names. We've narrowed it down or focused now on the exact lot by using the lot numbers rather than place names. Lalo is not in this area. Lalo is all the way down closer to Manila, number one. Adakau is further up north. And in Matrix report, what they studied was 102 acres, which is what this site is, 102 acres comprised of those seven lots. I don't think there's any other ancestral lands property, crown lands, that has an area of 102 acres, so and I'm not, you know, we submitted information to Matrix, but even local residents sometimes have a problem identifying a place names as exactly where they are. But I'm open to questions and I do have a testimony at the end after questions from the panel.
So you're saying that Matrix did study this property? Is it included in their list?
It's included in the list. If you look at the Table 2.5 from the master plan, final site selection comparison, you will see that what they studied in Adakau is 102 acres, which this combination of seven lots is 102 acres. I don't believe there's any, and the ancestral lands can correct me, I don't believe there's any other crown lands that is 102 acres.
So you're saying, but there's maps in the Matrix report that shows their Adakau property and they don't look like this. The Adakau property that, so are you saying that this is the Adakau property, you're saying this is the Adakau property, but I think you were saying this is not the Adakau property confirmed by Matrix.
I, I didn't want to assume what Matrix was referring to because Ancestral Lands has about 73 acres a little further north in Adakau on the Manila side. I mean, if you go up along Route 15 after you passed Ian Corporation, just before you get to Hawaiian Rock, the properties on the right side of Route 15 will be in Manila. On the left will be in Baragata. Now, if you go further up by the raceway, I mean, there's a golf course further up on Route 15 on that site, that area will start the, the the place name called Adakau all the way up towards Latty Heights. So that's why I would say I, I wouldn't want to assume, I'm not part of the you know, of the actual development of the, the hospital, my area is searching for the property. So I, I can't speak to that, that section of the Matrix, except what I have.
All right, so to confirm, wasn't it your testimony in previous hearings that you have this property available, but it was not included in the Matrix study? But you were proposing that it is just as good as Eagles Field?
Yes, and we discussed that, I guess, in the April 23rd. That's where that was brought up.
Yes, that's why we talked about it, right? Otherwise, it was not, it was not studied, so.
It's, it's not identified to us as Adakau, it's Eta Agaga. We do have Adakau property. It's not as large, it's 73 acres further north.
All right.
And Madam Chair, if you look at Matrix report where it says Adakau, it, it, it's a general map. There's no lot lines and like that. Unlike what is being presented here today, there's actually lot lines, there's actually lot numbers and, and like that. Adakau, where Adakau, where's Adakau? Adakau is where Adakau Elementary School is. Adakaw's where Adakaw Elementary School is.
Yes, but we're using what Matrix, the question is whether, not whether they're right or wrong in referring to it as Adakaw, but whether it was testimony earlier from Mr. Birch that they did not discuss this property, that they had discussed another property that the ancestral land owners, land owns in Adakaw.
I agree with Mr. Birch.
If you can confirm, Mr. Birch, so we have the maps, if you can just tell us where this additional lot that you're asking be included is.
An addition, well, I'm not asking for it, I'm just saying that it was under consideration, and that would be further north.
No, 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 you're asking for another lot.
Which lots, oh, Lot 2481.
Yes.
It is the southernmost lot on the map. If you want to place up the map so people could see it, it's about 41 acres, and it was only recently, because of, there was a time constraint placed on us, we're doing our due diligence to make sure that there were no claims or no ancestral rights, claims that were valid, you know, for any of these properties. We were able to clear the six lots, which account for about 61 acres. And then the one that we found, we found that about five individuals had filed claim for Lot 2481. But filing a claim for the property is one thing, actually owning it is another. And they filed claim and registered it with Department of Land Management, so it was our responsibility to verify this. And we've taken this, I've done our research, going back to when these properties were ceded to the United States back in 1898 from the Spanish Crown. And we followed through, all the way through, going through all the tax papers and whatever to verify it is government land.
All right, could we put the map back up, please?
So that's...
Put the map with the route, sorry, the proposed right of way. Okay, if you could confirm, is 2481 the lot between the colored areas?
It's...
Madam Chair, if I might pardon my interruption here, but Lot 2481 is divided into two different colors. Maybe a better map would be the previous map.
Okay, can we see another map?
Okay, if you see that map, let's say that it looks like a slingshot, where the handle is on the slingshot, that's Lot 2481 there in the bottom.
All right. On this map that we have printed, it says Lot 2436-1 for the base, for the handle.
And that's, and you got that map from GWA, Madam Chair?
I think so, yes.
Well, we're not responsible for that map.
Okay, so, hold on. So you're saying it's the handle, that whole big area that's already shaded pink is 2481?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so it was already included in the map depiction?
Madam Speaker, could I have somebody hand you this? This is from Ancestral Lands on the concept of the property, so we could explain to you.
Sure. All right, thank you. And can you just clarify then, Mr. Birch, from your testimony, you said that factors such as size, location, proximity, development constraints, traffic conditions, arterial road access were considered during this process. After thorough evaluation, these lots were identified as the most suitable. Do you have that evaluation?
No, we were tasked with looking for property that we had, that was large enough, level enough, that had access roads to it, and this meets that, the requirement, central location. I don't have that on me, but that was the request for the Matrix thing, and I'm not part of that. So this meant that based on whoever is on that committee to decide whether or not this property meant that. But when I was tasked with that challenge to find property, these are the lots that we identified.
I know, but you said that based on factors such as size, location, proximity to utilities, development constraints, population density, traffic, all of those factors, do you have the assessment of those factors for this property?
No, not in writing, sorry.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Borja, is there such an assessment?
Actually by Land Management, and what was done on it, on our Matrix, the document, not Matrix, the company.
All right.
We laid out these items, these comparison items on a, let's say, on a landscape thing. Matrix took that and changed it to a vertical thing and said, here we go.
Can we get a copy of that?
I don't have it with me, but...
And can you please indicate which of that listing is these properties? And just give us a copy?
And like that, yes, we do have Matrix, the document of the, I believe, about 17 lots that were considered, not just these three that were included in the Matrix Report. I have another map for you, Madam Chair, and this one is, we put a disclaimer on it, and we actually put who prepared it in the department so that they can be accountable for the work that they do. And this map actually shows the lots that are in the bill. And then we have another lot, or another map that shows all the lots that Ancestral Lands had submitted to Land Management as a potential site for that, including Lot 2481. Lot 2481, as you can tell, is not in the bill, but this is the one that Ancestral Lands is looking on it. This map we can be responsible for, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you.
And I submit that to our staff so that they can take it.
All right, again, so when Matrix narrowed it down to the three, and one was Adakaw, that is not this property. Is that correct?
I think so.
That's what was justified at the EPO hearing?
I think they just called it wrong, and the reason why I say that is because in their report, they reviewed 102 acres. That's why, I'm looking at the size, you know, not the name. You know, they say that they reviewed Adakaw, but based on the acres that is in the report, it's not Adakaw.
Okay, because I believe the governor and Mr. Birch have in their public hearings been making it very clear that this is not that property that was analyzed in the Matrix study.
That's correct, and I don't know if Matrix went out to the property. The governor and Mr. Birch certainly went out to the property and actually walked it, so...
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the maps. All right, we're going to proceed. Mr. Chairman of Guam Ancestral Lands, did you also want to testify on this bill?
Well, I'm open to any questions.
All right, thank you. And I know Joey's here from Ancestral Lands. Are there any questions for Ancestral Lands or the Department of Land Management before we hear testimony from the others? I'd like to welcome Senator Amanda Shelton, our Legislative Secretary. Thank you for being here. Any questions for Ancestral Lands or Department of Land Management before we begin with the other testimony? Senator Tytegri or Barnett? If not, then we'll proceed with testimony. Thank you. All right, so we have signed up, I've got about four pages, so please bear with us. We've got Ken Leon Guerrero, the mayor, Ernest Charagelov from Melissou, Mayor Anthony Charagelov in Alaha, Ricardo Cruz Camacho.
Madam Chair, I'll move from the table, but I'll sit in the side there.
Thank you, I appreciate if you two could stay for questions, thank you. Bernie Diego Lujan, Dr. Hoa Nguyen, Antalin Manjola, Joe San Augustine from the Veterans Affairs Office, sorry, Benny San Nicholas, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. San Augustine, I'll get you in the next panel. Sisus Masih. Okay, so we'll begin. Mr. Leon Guerrero, you may begin.
My name is Ken Leon Guerrero, and I have been dancing with Guam Memorial Hospital since 2010. When I first came back to Guam, I mean, prior to leaving to the mainland in '79, Guam had a third world medical system. Since coming back, I was pleasantly surprised to see that we have a first world medical system here. Now, I say that because I lived in Honolulu, Los Angeles, Reno, and Atlanta, and for 25 years, I went with a serious medical condition that caused me chronic pain, and it went improperly diagnosed until I returned to Guam. And Guam's medical system here properly diagnosed it, and I'm pain free and have been for the past 14 years. The reason I say that is because for the past 60 years, the policy here on Guam has been to encourage doctors to relocate to the island and help build a public healthcare system that is first class, and we have done that, and we have done that successfully. The only part of our public healthcare system that is third world now is the hospital, and we are working hard to address that. So first thing we need to look at is location. Bill 184 is not that location. Menilo is not the location for a number of reasons. Number one being that we have spent 60 years building the medical infrastructure in the Timooning area, and if we build the hospital in Baragata on Route 15, it will take 60 years to rebuild that medical system out there in Baragata, because we cannot expect all the doctors who have spent decades and millions of dollars building their practices and facilities in the Timooning area to walk away from it. Which brings us to why location is also important too. It's called the golden hour. Whenever there's a medical emergency, doctors and emergency personnel, frontliners all know and work to support the golden hour. Many times, I have been at my doctor's office and had the staff come out and tell me, oh, we're going to have to reschedule you two tomorrow because there was an emergency at GMH. That happens every day. It happens at every clinic, it happens at every office, because the majority of the medical facility, the medical system, is not government of Guam hospital, it is not GMH staff. The majority of the medical system that makes Guam's system first class is private practitioners in close proximity to the hospital facility. The hospital is, they are there to support the hospital. And until such time as government of Guam reaps in another multi-billion dollar bounty where they can afford to hire all the doctors to create a first-class medical system based on the hospital, that's never going to happen. We're looking at our economy that's going in the toilet, and it's gonna, I mean, all you have to do is look around the world and see that our tourism industry is never going to be the money generator it used to be. Our population is declining, our population is getting sicker, our population is underemployed, so we do not have the population and the money to build a world-class medical tourism facility that Governor proposed Monday when I went to her, whatever that was. Because when you have a choice to go to the Philippines, Thailand, Taiwan, Honolulu, Los Angeles, Guam is not going to be on your radar. So we need to forget that we're going to create a medical center of excellence that's going to attract medical tourism. That isn't going to happen. We need a hospital now, a new hospital now. That's where location comes in, because logistics. I live in Santa Rita, they've been talking about repaving Route 5 for 10 years. They finally started. 10 years ago, the cost to repave two miles of road was $7.5 million. I think we're somewhere over $15 million now to repave a road. For Route 15, you're talking about expanding, and you see, if you've driven Route 15, you know that that road is built up. If we're going to expand it, we're going to have to build up that road some places 40 or 50 feet. So we're not talking about a quick fix here, we're talking five to 10 years just to build the road so we can build the hospital. If you've ever driven on Route 15, you know that that is not a fast route, especially during the day with all the construction trucks and cement trucks moving up and down Route 15. So, location, and then we're looking at the cost of the infrastructure. The reason I bring that up is the Matrix Report cites $20 million. If we're spending 15 to repave two miles of Route 7, where do they get $20 million to expand and build up Route 15? And then you have to expand and build up Route 10, and the governor says that we're going to have the federal government come in and expand 8A from PC Lujan over to this site. Even in her presentation, she was saying it's going to be about 10 years for this project to be fully operational. We can't wait 10 years, that's 30,000 people born in a subpar facility. I got involved Guam Memorial Hospital because I knew one day I was going to have grandchildren. 2010 was my first testimony on labor and delivery. 2023, my granddaughter was born in what I would call a fourth world facility. The governor's had billions of dollars to replace and repair problems she said she would. The Army Corps of Engineers report that people keep citing, it's not 740 million to repair, it's 740 million to renovate and reconstruct and build the existing facility up to state-of-the-code standards. What the report identifies is 20 to 30 million dollars of necessary repairs to extend the useful life of the building for five to 10 years to give the local government time to site and build a new facility. Now, the fallacy that was trumpeted highly at that meeting is if we build it, they will come. If we build this golden palace out there in Menilo across from the golden palace that Guam Water and Guam Power currently have, that we will bring doctors in, all of our departed children will come back to the island to practice in this facility, but that overlooks the numbers. Our population now is now under 150,000. We are now down closer to 30,000 families than we were 40,000 families at the census because of the exodus we've been going through. The best and the brightest have been leaving, the higher income people have been leaving, and as a result, with businesses closing, we have gotten insurance poorer. The number of people covered by insurance has dropped dramatically, and the number of people that use the emergency room as their primary care physician has gone up substantially. We can't wait 10 to 20 years to build a new facility. You say that's wrong? Look at Simon Sanchez. I remember 2010 is when everybody was, you know, in agreement that we would rebuild Simon Sanchez, look where we are right now. So the biggest mistake this legislature could make would be to pass this bill and give priority to building a hospital on a site that's going to take $2 to $3 million and two to three years just to do the environmental. You doubt that? Look up NEPA reports and see that the average NEPA, which will be required, will take two to three years. That's one of the reasons why GRRP never got off the ground, they refused to do the required reports to comply with EPA. Building at this location will be a tremendous waste of money, because already this facility has provided the funding for a new hospital. You have already done the hard part. At the presentation by the governor, she waved this flag on all these incredible conversations about federal funds that are going to rebuild Route 15, federal funds that are going to be rebuilt, federal funds are going to build a brand-new VA clinic, federal funds that will pay for the hospital. But I learned a long time ago that... But I learned a long time ago that verbal contracts aren't worth the paper they're written on. So until such time as we see actual documentation confirming that those federal funds are available, don't take it, don't even consider it. Only consider what is available, and you've already made the funding available. And I'll tell you what, if this body were to pick another site that was better logistically, better from a medical point of view, a site that supported the 60 years of infrastructure, private infrastructure built to support public health and accessible to a majority of the population and not built adjacent to a missile defense battery that would be a primary target in the event that things do go bad out here, I think the federal funds would follow right to whatever location this body selects. So don't fall for that. If we don't build it out here, we're going to miss the opportunity to get all these federal funds. Because if you build it at a location that already has infrastructure, accessible to a majority of the population, and is fully supported by the people who will be doing a majority of the work there, in other words, the private medical community, I think you'll have an easier time getting the federal funds if they're available. But you've already made the funding vehicle available. You already have better locations in another site that will be heard on the 12th. And if you apply the same level of effort to developing that, that has gone into developing this pipe dream that will never happen, just like the waste energy plant never happened, I think it will be better for the people of Guam. It will be built faster, and it will be a stronger public health system as a result of those efforts. In closing, I would like to say that the Governor made a big deal that this would be a funding vehicle for ancestral lands community, that we could pay ancestral lands, and they could use the money to develop other properties. Well, you know, what's the difference between government of Guam paying ancestral lands to use this land and building a hospital where it makes more sense and still give government of Guam, still give ancestral lands the money the Governor was planning to give to rent the land? I think it makes more sense to do it that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leon Guerrero. Mayor Chargalov, Ernest Chargalov.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Senators, good morning. My name is Ernest Chargalov, and I'm the mayor of Melissou. I'm here in support of Bill 184-37. Just until Monday that I got invited to an information meeting at the governance complex, and, you know, I'm looking at the concept to build a campus, and like the prior speaker said, you know, we're going to waste time. The whole hospital was built in 1956, and they're both at Oka Point. The new hospital was built in 1982. Now, we have to lay the foundation to build another one, because we cannot just close down a hospital now. We have to make plans to build a new hospital. And we cannot just continue the hospital now because we're going to build. You have to identify the funds, and this is a process to start. And, you know, if we're going to start looking at the convenience of the doctors being in close proximity to the hospital, a lot of these clinics, the patients go to their doctors just for ordinary care. How about the acute and all the traumatic? Yes, you know, it's good, but there's always an emergency doctor there that will stabilize. Even the government has a, an agreement with the federal and with the military. The closest hospital, if you're coming from the south, you go to Naval Hospital, and they stabilize you until you're able to be treated and stabilized and transported to a civilian hospital, and vice versa. If you're in the military and you headed to Naval Hospital and it's traumatic, you go to either GMH, they stabilize you until you're able to be transported down to Naval Hospital. It's time that we take a look at, you know what, don't look at the now, look at the future. I'm here because I showed the concept. Land Management was there. Assetral Land Commission was there. Gila was there. When you look at the map, that represents, if you look at the drawing of the property, it represents a latte. I don't know if you guys noticed that. To me, what is the crux here? We're trying to build a new hospital. We've got to start somewhere somehow, okay? Now, for those that oppose, they have their own reasons why they oppose, and for those that support, we have our own reasons. But we can always agree to disagree. But what is the crux here is to build a new hospital. We've got to start somewhere somehow. Now, where we get the funding, we can identify as we go along. But the main thing is to lay the foundation. And that is what a latte stone is, the foundation of a Chongor entity. And we are so, in '56 to '82, you do the math, okay? From '56 to '82 is only 26 years. That hospital has been built, finished in 1982. What's the year today? 2023. Forty-some years. There was an urgency back in '56 when it was built, back, finished, and they needed a new hospital before they completed to '82. Of course, you're not going to build something that big in so little time. But let's lay the foundation. Let's lay the groundwork to go forward, to make the plans now, instead of sitting on the rawls and wait until we don't have funding. We can identify funding, guys. We have the military buildup. They're going to, they're going to improve the roadways. We can tie all of these developments together so it becomes, you know, mutual benefit, not only to the military, but to the government of Guam and to the people of Guam. If you have a reason that because the facilities, the doctors build a facility next to the hospital, of course, it's for convenience and, you know, when emergency, when times of the essence, the sooner you get there, may mean that it creates the difference between life and death. That's understandable. But to me, you're going to have to adjust. But at some point in time, we've got to lay the foundation to start somewhere, and this is a start. Senators, I know that not everybody's on board, but when it's for the good of the people, you know, the principles of democracy is to promote the Constitution, is to promote the welfare. And right now, we're trying to address the health and welfare of people, and this complex will provide for that. Everything's going to be within that complex, even to include the veterans who deserve better service, okay? The veterans are in there. Mr. Leon Guerrero is a veteran himself. The veterans are in there. Public health, there's going to be specified fields located within that compound, within that complex. So please, Senator, I'm here because I was enthused with the concept, and not only am I here because it provides convenience to my people as well. You try driving from Melissou into Aganin, you're going to hit a lot of traffic. When we drive from Melissou to Manila, you bypass the traffic. Eventually, as Manila and Baragata become developed, we're going to go through the same thing, okay? But Aganin is so congested. Just the other day, I had to take my wife to the hospital, to the emergency room. There was no ambulance in Humana. So I had to drive her. I was calling 911, I'm en route to the hospital. Is there an ambulance in Ague? There's nothing there. But they recommended that I drive my wife to the Ague fire station. Well, I'd rather drive my wife closer to the hospital, because if something happens, at least I'm closer to the hospital than I am down in Ague. The closest ambulance that could get to me was the money. Well, if they can come and meet me en route, it'll be shorter than to wait in Ague. At least we're going forward towards the hospital. It makes better sense to proceed, and, you know, God forbid that we have an accident, but I'm going to get my wife closer to care. So to me, we've got to lay the foundation now, because, you know, we've got to start somewhere. If we don't start, we're going to be facing the same thing. We're going to need hospitals, because that hospital was built back in 1982. The population has boomed in Guam. And of course, now you have GRMC, you have Naval Hospital to take care of the veterans. But the government has to build a new hospital because our people need it. And now is the time. I know that people are going to be opposed to it, and people are going to support it, but let's put our minds together that we need to start somewhere. And for me, I came here because I, you know, I'm enthused with the concept, the idea, and let's lay the foundation. I'm sorry that we have to, you know, disagree, but we've got to agree that this is something that we have to pursue, whether we do it now or later. It still has to be pursued. That hospital is leaking. It's in the newspaper. It's promised. But you can identify ways to address those problems now while you're building a new hospital later. But for now, you know, let's start somewhere, and I'm here because I want to bring convenience to my people as well. We're in the far south. There's a perception in the far south, I'm 65, and there's been a perception in the far south residents, the southernmost residents, that when it comes to government service and representation, we are underrepresented and neglected down in the far south. I don't know if you guys understand that, but I'm not, I didn't embed this. I didn't came up with this just now. It's a perception that's been going on for years and years. And, you know, to me, whether you're neglected or not, you're going to find somebody that will pick up on that neglect and take care of you. That's what I believe, is that, you know, when people need help, you be there whether you know them or not. You're there. Good Samaritan, we do, you can pick up a person who's totally strange or help them out because they need help. Now is the time, you know, we just went through Typhoon Mawar, a lot of things, we're recovering. But right now, this is a start. And please, Senator, although you know that there's always opposition and agreements, but let's all agree to disagree, but let's come to a common conclusion that this is the crux, is to build a new hospital. And let's lay this foundation, and this is a start. Thank you.
Sidoos Massey, Mayor Chargalov. Anthony Chargalov, Mayor in Alahan.
Buenos dias, Honorable Speaker Theresa Alahi. And to the rest of the honorable senators of the 37 Guam Legislature, good morning. My name is Anthony Polino Chargalov Jr., the current mayor of the beautiful village of Inalahan. I'm here today to provide my full support for Bill 184-37, the building of the new Guam Memorial Hospital in Manila, and I am requesting that all of you senators offer your full support as well. I know that there was much opposition to the initial proposal of Eagles Field, where the ancestral landowners would have preferred to have their lands returned, and I respect those wishes. This current proposal has identified crown lands, and the only ownership is that of the government of Guam. The current proposed location will be very favorable to the southern and central villages and for everyone else on the island. Based on the 2020 census, the population from Melissou is 1,604. Inalahan, 2,317. Talafofu, 3,550. Jotnia, 6,298. Chalampago Orde, 7,064. Baragata, 7,956. Manila, 13,476 alone. But if you include the daytime population of Department of Corrections with 820, University of Guam with 3,105, and GCC with 1,618, Manila has a total of 19,019 people in their village, with a total combined population of other villages totaling 47,808, which represents about 31% of the population. Under ideal conditions, travel for patients from Inalahan to Naval Hospital takes approximately 35 minutes. Inalahan to the existing GMH takes approximately 40 minutes. Inalahan to GRMC will be closer to one hour, while this new proposed location will only, will take approximately 30 minutes from Inalahan. Please note that the travel times indicated are based on ideal conditions. With the exception of the proposed site in Manila, the other three existing hospital travel times can drastically change based on rush-hour times, heavy rain, or traffic accidents, as those areas are already congested without these additional conditions. As we all are aware of, in times of a life-or-death situation, minutes, even seconds, significantly matter. I have heard that some doctors may oppose this location simply because of its location. I have heard that the distance is an issue or may be an issue. I also heard about how we can recruit new doctors when we currently don't even have enough at the existing hospital. I know that a new hospital creates an inviting environment, an environment that will inspire new doctors to want to be a part of this new hospital. This new hospital will serve our people for the next 50 years. With that said, we will expect to have new doctors be a part of this hospital. Whether they stay in Manila will be solely their choice. Personally, if I was a doctor, I would absolutely stay in this beautiful village of Manila. I want to bring in the La John landfill, which Inalahan is the hosting village. I remember testifying about this landfill, not because it was going to be in my backyard, but because of its close proximity to the Ougam watershed and its potential to contaminate the Ougam River, which is currently the only source of water being treated to serve the southern end of the island, down to Humastak, all the way across to Santa Rita and Hoguet. To argue that this hospital should be placed where the Bakwada people are should have also been the same argument being made when the issue of trash placement or management was being placed on the discussion table. That argument was never made, nor was the distance of daily travels by the trash haulers to and from the John landfill, Monday to Saturday, ever debated or considered. Yet, when a new proposed hospital that can better serve the southern villagers to include the overall island population, the location is now an issue. Quite frankly, as a southerner, a hospital with even closer proximity, such as Windward Hills, will be more acceptable and suitable. How about Department of Corrections? Why was this institution not considered to be built in the populous part of the island? In 2014, my mother was transported immediately to Naval Hospital due to conditions associated with congestive heart failure. After she was stabilized, she was transported by ambulance to GMH for the next three months, undergoing further treatment and monitoring. Doctors gave all clear for her return home after three months of being hospitalized. Unfortunately, in less than one week, my mom had to once again be transported, but this time, while en route, the ambulance drivers were informed to divert from Naval Hospital to GMH, perhaps due to beds filled to capacity or other reasons that was never made known to myself or my family. By the time she arrived at GMH, she was deemed brain-dead, and the family had agreed to keep her on life support in hopes that she will be back, able to come back. That never happened, and she passed away only days after readmittance. I know we're all destined to die, but could she have made it if we were accepted at Naval Hospital? Or the better question is, could she still be with us today if this new hospital was built and available to service our people? Why should anyone else in the south or around this island have to worry about the distance, time, and speed when we have this very opportunity to address that now with this new hospital? The folks on the southwest side of the island still have the Naval Hospital for life-threatening conditions, while the northwest side of the island has GRMC again for any immediate life-threatening situations. This location will resolve the need for the extreme southern-eastern folks, along with a big central population, while still having the ability to equally serve the entire island. In closing, I want to say that we always hear that if we could save just one life, then our efforts were well worth every minute. This hospital was that opportunity to not just save one life, but hundreds, if not thousands, and for many generations to come. It is always difficult to be objective when we are being emotional and being emotional about doctors' current residential location, rather than what is good for the greater community needs to be thoroughly and heavily considered. We will eventually recruit new doctors who are willing to serve this beautiful island of Guam. I will not be here in the next 50 years, and probably most of you senators will not be here, too, along with our current doctors. So please know that the decision you all collectively make will impact our children, grandchildren, and great-grandchildren. I leave the decision to all of you senators in this august and noble body. I respect your wisdom, your intellect, and your knowledge, and I have full confidence that your decisions will be for the interest, advancement, and benefit of our island healthcare and our people. If not you, then who? And if not now, then when? Thank you, and may God bless each and every one of you. Sidoos Massey.
Ricardo Cruz Camacho.
Good morning, Madam Speaker and Senators. I see some of you are veterans also, for sure. Joe, Dwayne there? I'm justifying on behalf of the veteran's perspective. I'm justifying on behalf of the veteran's perspective. I'd like to read this. Every Veterans Day in November and Memorial Day in May, this legislature says, "Thank you for your service. Let us not forget those who served." If you really want to thank us, build this medical complex. Otherwise, all you say is meaningless, hollow, and empty. To any senator who is against this, I say, "What do you have against veterans?" Don't you believe we deserve this? Veterans and their families have to travel off-island at thousands of dollars to get the treatment they can't receive here. But if they build it here, what is the cost to veterans and their families instead of what is it gonna cost to government of Guam? Veterans here in Guam has to call Hawaii to get our prescription or meds filled. It takes 10 to 12 days to get here. With this complex, we can get it right away, especially during the pandemic. A lot of veterans are getting MedForman and Lisinopril. That's what's keeping us alive. With the mail problems and the... I had to go to a private clinic. Good thing I'm covered under that clinic to get my medication because the CBAC, the community-based outreach clinic, couldn't fill that prescription for me. Why? We can get it here. We used to get it at Naval Hospital, but their priority are the active duty and the retirees. Us veterans have to go out there. The CBAC is too small right now, just like GMH. We have parking problems there too. Even if you renovate that GMH, where are you gonna find the parking? What room do you have? I would like to say that you can put lipstick on a gorilla and it'll still be ugly. And how are you gonna renovate that hospital while... while day-to-day basics of what's going on right there? How are you gonna do that without the noise and the pollution and everything? I would like to make some quotes here for... about us veterans. "The nation which forgets its defenders will be itself forgotten." President Calvin Coolidge. "The willingness with which our young people are likely to serve any war, no matter how justified, shall be directly proportional as to how they perceive the veterans of earlier wars were treated and appreciated by their nation." President George Washington. "Brothers in arms, but we shall be remembered. We few, we happy few, we banderbrothers. For he today that sheds his blood with me shall be my brother." Let me see, one more here. I think anyone that's ever been in battle is a little bit scared. If he wasn't, he isn't up there where the battle was, to me. You're not really scared, but you know it's either you or him. Heroes are funny people. A dead man is not a hero. A hero is the man who makes the other son of a [bleep] die for his country. So what do you, senators, oppose against this? What do you have against veterans? We deserve this. I'm looking at... Doesn't matter how much it costs or how long it's gonna be built. It's better than what we have now. A million times better. Thank you.
Sidoos Masih, Mr. Camacho. Bernie Diego Lohan.
Hi, senators. I believe there is a video of my testimony that is going to be played. I attended the Saturday Veterans up at Adelou, and I don't want to repeat that whole thing if the video can be played.
That was published in KUAM, right? Or one of the media, the video of...
This is the complete, my complete testimony of four minutes. Is that able to be played?
Yeah, all right. If audio could load that and play that. This is your testimony to the governor at the meeting you had with the governor?
It was for the veterans, yes. It was my testimony. So it is also as well testimony for support of Bill 184. And then I shall have additional to that, not much longer.
Okay, my sincere apologies. Audio is saying they don't have that again. I'm not sure why. Well, I know you tried to make arrangements for that.
They did confirm that they received it.
It's a video.
I believe the two ladies that were there earlier...
Yes, I know. It's a video that was submitted. All right. All right, I'm sorry. We're gonna have to clarify. I don't know what the issue is. My apologies, my sincere apologies. If you don't mind waiting, we'll proceed with testimony and we'll get back to that. Thank you. Dr. Wen?
Thank you so much. I think I have a PowerPoint there that I gave this morning, and I'm just gonna go one by one.
All right, let me confirm this. Does audio have Dr. Wen's PowerPoint? AV, here it is. Okay, Dr. Wen, please proceed. Copies of this have been passed out to the senators as well.
Okay, thank you so much for giving me a chance to talk. And, you know, I'm here, just like anyone else and my colleague. We had to cancel my patient this morning, but I speak on behalf of the majority of physician. You have the letter from the chief of medical staff, Dr. John Seidel, which represent the majority of the GMH staff. You have, I think, the letter from the three major medical clinic, AMCSD and FHP. And you have GMA, which is Guam Medical Association, and also GMS. So this is on behalf of them because most of them have clinic this morning. I just want to just clarify some of the... I think I have to listen to everyone here. There's a lot of misconception. And the reason I speak not... You know, we all need a new hospital, but the question is medical complex for the hospital because, you know, it's gonna give the cost of living in Guam outrageously high because this has cost a lot to do this. And some of this entity should not be there in the complex. I'm gonna go one by one and just try to clarify this misunderstanding for a lot of people here. Department of Public Health, no. On the location is a no, I explain why. Mental health? You don't see mental health here. You know, they have federal grant to kind of build a new wing where the footprint are. So we don't see the point that they're gonna build a new wing where they are and then they pick up and move to a new location a few years later. Physician office building? It's 120 physician office building for specialty and primary care. You know, most of physicians already in around EPOD area already. And I explain why physician buildings are really a waste of money for everybody, everyone in this room and everyone in Guam. The veteran clinic? I explain why. I'm a veteran, and I say thank you so much for all my colleagues here that's also a veteran. But I'm speaking on behalf of someone protect you from a promise that cannot be delivered, okay? Pharmacy? You have pharmacy all over the island, but it's very unique when you talk about pharmacy for the veteran. The new hospital, the Matrix, show EPOD the best location. And CDC lab, as you can see, it's supposed to be on medical complex, but now moved off of it because they have their own space, so I leave that out. Now, second slide, please. Next slide. Okay, veteran clinic. I'm a vet. I see patients in my clinic right now as a vet at the TriWest, and I feel for all the veteran in Guam and all the veteran across the United States. It's not just Guam. Veteran care and the VA clinic is very unique. You know, I got frustrated when I see TriWest patient veteran because I cannot get access to the VA system. They won't allow you. There's no allowance at all for any private entity, local entity like the GovGuam, to have access to the TriWest system. It's impossible. It's not controlled by me, controlled by the governor. It's not controlled by anyone except the federal side and the Department of Veteran Affairs. TriWest patient always ask, "How can we access?" We cannot. We wish we can. So to say that to be in the same complex as the hospital, so you can have access to the veteran EMR, electronic record? I don't know where that statement coming from, but it's impossible. You know, to build a clinic for the veteran, I applaud the idea of trying to do that. But provider and clinical staff, is that the responsibility of GovGuam or the Veteran Affairs that go to provide the provider and clinic? The reason that our colleague cannot access to CBAC, the VA clinic in the hospital, because they have no staff. You can't get in there. It's a major problem across anywhere that we have problem with provider. You know, I wish I can get in there. I can't even make appointment in there. You know, so our veteran had to go outside and get TriWest to get care outside. That's a problem we cannot fix here. So, you know, the governor says share high-level discussion with the Department of Veteran Affairs. Just like Ken say, you can discuss all you want. You have some firm documentation that I will take that because that's for me, for everyone in this room. Verbal mean nothing, you know, at the meeting. Yeah, they can support you, but action speak louder than words, so I just wait to see. A standalone veteran clinic, they not gonna co-locate anyone. Find me a place they locate in the United States, they can't. They just by themselves. Built by the VA. If they want to build one for Guam, they will build one. Or they'll build one in Naval Hospital. There's no one there to staff it. They all way a shortage. So, you know, if they want to put the VA hospital here, they can. But again, there's a shortage of staff. They won't build. And we build one? I don't know. Who's paying for it? Who provide the staff? It's impossible. GovGuam and any private clinic in order to see me or the rest is veteran, you have to be agreeable, allowable credentially, and certified by the VA. If not, you can open your clinic and the VA say you cannot go there. It had be approved by TriWest. So you cannot say you open a VA clinic and say, "Oh, our veteran can access to it." I say, I mean, you gotta make it happen. You cannot promise our veteran that it will happen to you. Veteran, the majority of people I see, you know, we have some type of anxiety, PTSD, everything that we can think of for psychiatrists, evaluation and care. Can you find one in Guam? You have two or three psychiatrists on the outside. Dr. Bellis, I think another one. And then inside the fence, you have psychiatrists from the VA from Hawaii. You open the VA clinic outside, where are you gonna find psychiatrists? None. Absolutely zero. That's the most challenge that I have in seeing the veteran in our clinic because I don't know where to send them for psychiatrist care. There's none. So the specialty care, like the pain management, where are they gonna go? You promised them all this service under one roof. As a healthcare provider that see veteran for past 20 years? I find it impossible. So to my colleague in this room, I'm not fighting you. I don't think these people and senator are fighting you. It's a reality that we have... If we want to provide better care for you, we go straight to Washington. We lobby the Department of Veteran Affairs to make things happen. But don't promise the local veteran that our government will step in and build a clinic that will serve you. I hate that. You know, that's playing with people's mind and very deceiving to do that. I see you. I see your pain. I'll be in the same shoes. But I want something that's solid and writing in order for this complex with the veteran clinic to be there for you. But right now, I don't see it. Next slide, please. Department of Public Health Social Services, the justification for, to be locate the new hospital. First time I hear it, Mr. Kendall say they need to coexist in the same location because they need to use electronic medical record. My goodness, not everyone is that ignorant. Electronic record, you can be anywhere. I have electronic medical record in my clinic. I access from Louisiana where you go see my parents. That's convenience. It don't have to be in one place. So to justify that public health to be right next to facility because they use the EMR, that's really out of touch. Public health, as far as I'm here, it's in 1995. They have no interaction with the hospital. None, zero. They don't share any medical record. Why they have to be in the same place? It didn't make any sense. You know, I listened to the governor talk on the hearing at GCC the other day, and she mentioned that public health need to be in the same place to provide transitional medicine. I'm not sure if you know what that means. Transitional medicine mean that when the patient discharged from the hospital, they have 72 hours to see a primary care provider, or up to one week because to reduce the rebound back to the hospital. I had to tell you, public health no expertise or qualified provider for transitional medicine. Even as big as we are, with all the physician, not nurse practitioner, not PA, we are facing a big challenge in take care of a complicated patient that just discharged from the hospital that we know nothing about. And you're gonna expect public health to pick up that rule? A lot of people get hurt. Public health don't even have internal medicine doc on staff. It's only NP. So how can your mid-level provider provide a transitional medicine to the discharged patient? That's a justification for them to be in the same hospital complex? You put life in danger when you do that. You, little knowledge become very dangerous when you face those challenges. So they don't have a manpower. If you call public health right now, you can't get in. They're limited spot appointment. How do you go to expect a patient that discharged from the hospital go straight to public health and get transitional medicine? It's not gonna happen. Like I say, even during pandemic, I try to get public health to involve the hospital. Zero. There's no involvement, the two entities, so they don't need to be in the same location. Next slide, please. Okay. I see a lot of people from the south that have very middle care, do no care on the south. I understand your pain. Trust me, I want the care be down there for you. Even for AMC, we, we were planning to put down there a clinic to serve you, but it's not feasible for us to do that. You have public health north and south. There's a public health in Rahan, beautiful building, huge building. I, I, I wish I can run my clinic out of that place because that's the place where you need to provide the chronic care manage for you to try to keep you away from the hospital. You know, you don't have care down there. You try to make an appointment up here down south, can you get in? Anyone in this room? You can't, you cannot. They not with a dentist down there. You know, that's the responsibility of public health to go down there and staff it appropriately to serve the people down south. That's what we build AMC Manila for, for chronic care management, to keep the people from going to the hospital. By the time you go to ER to go see the hospital, too late already. You, no one do your chronic care management. That's the responsibility for public health south. You don't justify build another one central in Manila to provide care. For what? They can even staff the public health down south. So demand on your local government to staff physician, nurse down there, public health south to serve you every day. You know, we work the weekend, private size. South part in, in Rahan is so remote. When we do medical mission now, they say, man, people down here don't have no care. But you have a beautiful building. There's no one in there. Come on, demand the care that you deserve down there and not build another empty building for you. So, you know, and public health, they say that build in central so they can have an urgent care to alleviate the congestion in the hospital emergency room. Public health don't win, do urgent care in north and south. So they not gonna alleviate any burden to you at all. So demand the care that you want because the building down there are ready. The next slide, please. Okay, um, like I said, they just need to stand back the patient and have a chronic care management, just like AMC Manila. We establish the patient and transport them to ER. But public health should be next to hospital. They don't really do anything to the, to the hospital. They supposed to be there for your chronic care management, your blood pressure, diabetes. You don't have to go up north. Demand that. But to build one in central, it's gonna be another empty building because there no staff to run it. Okay, mental health. Next slide, please. You know, I say mental health provider never in my history have any privilege for admission to the hospital. They never do. They don't go to hospital. You ask for consultation in hospital and say, send them to mental health. We don't go to the hospital. Why they have to be next door to the hospital? Very rarely that you transfer the patient mental health to hospital back and forth. So, uh, why they had to be right next to the hospital? So, you know, um, when I say they, I heard recently they have a federal grant to build a new wing to the existing mental health. So they gonna build a new wing. Why they wanna pick up and move to a new location a few years later? It's a waste of money. Money can go to people Guam. Okay, this physician office building, next slide, please. It's something that, oh my goodness, guys, 120 physician office space. Who would go to those space? Any primary care or specialty care gonna go in there? You gotta ask the question, you gotta learn from things. G R M C has a beautiful building, beautiful new hospital. I go in there, I can eat with the floor, it's so clean. There's a building in front of it, right? That's supposed to be the concept of physician office building. Do you see anyone go in there for the past seven, eight years that they open? There's no primary care physician in there. There's no specialist in there that G R M C, as new as they are, attract people. There's no lab in there. I wasn't, in one, something like try to get a veteran clinic to go in there. Uh, does it happen? Absolutely not. The building is still empty. So what are you gonna do with 120 physician office space? That money can go to the people to do something else. The cost of living is high enough already and we're gonna put the 120 physician. That's a huge building. For what reason? You know, just like can't say you build and they come. Ah, I tell you, that's a dream. G R M C is brand new. What's the difference G R M C and the new GMH? Nothing. They are brand new. They are JECO accredited, the highest level you can care. Do you see that any specialist flock in there? No, they not. So we cannot say that we build and they come. It's not gonna happen. The medical complex and everything is already around EPO. And Gita already saying the last meeting that it's kind of hard to move the whole medical system, uh, to a different location because it's already ingrained where they are. Next, next slide, please. Pharmacy. Okay, mostly I don't know this. We have tons of pharmacy everywhere, across north and south, everywhere. But you know, for our veteran, your medication is out of control for anybody. I read to say that all the pharmacy, I confirm with the pharmacist, none of the pharmacy on island take Tri Care or Tri West. None. You cannot buy your medication anywhere because it's not because they don't want to sell to you. Because whatever VA in Hawaii will not allow them or pay them the price that they asked for. So it's not your choice or my choice or the governor's choice that will dispense the medication for you. That's up way on top of the federal level. You gotta ask why that. You gotta send the governor and the senator there and lobby why you had to do that. You know, even private pharmacy, private insurance, select care, take care. They love the three-month supply that they mail out in the pharmacy. That's what the VA in Hawaii do to you. They mail to everyone a three-month prescription of all your medication. And you don't pay anything, but that's the decision make way on top in Washington somewhere. And not, no one can interfere with that. So they gonna put the pharmacy in this complex and they tell you, you can pick up medication there? Who's paying for it? Is Gov Guam pay for it? Or Tri West pay for it? You have pharmacy everywhere. None of them will take Tri West. So yes, my medication I take, I have to go to Hawaii, just like the same as you are. So governor cannot promise you that you can pick up your medication at the pharmacy on this complex. That's why I'm get so upset. Because I'm the same shoes as you are and I know that when you promise something, you cannot deliver. You deceiving your people. I wish I can change. I wish governor can change, but I don't, I think it's above a pay grade to do that. So do not make any statement to veteran or promise. You cannot answer this question. Is Gov Guam pay for all this pharmacy? I don't think so. Is the Tri West pay for it? I'm not sure they approve it. Just like they don't approve anyone in the local pharmacy. So next slide, please. So the new hospital, that's everyone goal. My goal, your goal, everyone goal. The new hospital. We need it so badly, we need it so fast. But hospital size should be based on the ability to staff. The current clinical staff at GMH, you can, you can disagree with me, is you can staff about 90 to 100 bed capacity. If I'm wrong, let me know. You cannot go past 150 and that using the travel nurse. We don't see any improvement to train more nurse locally. So we're gonna plan to build a 300-bed hospital on this medical complex, expandable to 600. Where are you go find your staff? If you look 20 years down the line, you gonna echo throughout this hospital because there's two-thirds of them will be empty. Man, that costs a lot. We all worry about our cost of living in Guam. That's so high already. We're gonna build a 300-bed hospital. That's unreal. Who gonna staff that? You know, and I heard the other day that they want to build a hospital horizontally because the typhoon and whatever. Guys, the number one rule about building a clinic or hospital is a manamko, the older people. You know, when I build a clinic, I worry about how long my elderly patient can walk. If you build horizontally, how you gonna make the patient walk all that distance of several acre in the hospital? You build vertically so they don't have to walk that far. So, you know, don't build them horizontally, build vertically. If we build them correctly, according to the code, typhoon would be nothing. As bad as GMH, just don't survive an earthquake or eight-point something, didn't fall down, right? Okay, next slide, please. Almost done. Medical complex is a taxpayer burden. I tell you, it will cost everyone in this room. I don't see any federal money going down. It's just verbally agreement, but it costs a lot. And the statement that once we build a complex, that our patient don't have to go for island because specialty care and we compare ourselves to Stanford in California. Oh my goodness, guys. Specialists won't come because you have a new hospital. I have a pa, a physician to come in to Guam and I have a hard time have someone hire this person because we don't have one in Guam. She moved here because her husband is United Airlines. Her specialty, pediatric cardiologist. My, you know, that's, that's high you can get up there. She can't find a job here. G R M C will not pick her up. She get paid a lot. We don't have the volume of patient for her to come here. She, she cannot see just general pediatric. She's a pediatric cardiologist. We don't have the number here on island to do that. Dr. Conception, the cardiothoraxist surgeon from Guam. He came here, as you remember, a few many months ago to do bypass. He say straight, I cannot set up a practice here in Guam as much I can help my island because there's no number for him to do the surgery here in Guam. So you don't see him coming anymore. Just because he don't love Guam. It's just that his specialty care so high that usually practicing in the area where millions of people to serve for that specialist. So to say that if you build this hospital that we recruit all the specialty of island, you gotta live in reality. We have an island of 150,000 people. They cannot come. So again, you know, uh, next slide, this is the last one. So the new hospital had to be right size and the best location is EPO. And so shown the matrix already. What the surgeon and the specialist that we have now in Guam asked me to say is build a right-side hospital, but well-equipped. So, so the physician and clinical staff can provide the care for people Guam. You know, um, a lot like urologists in Guam. They cannot do the procedure because there's no equipment. Invest the money and equipment so our physician can serve the people and not waste the money and build a huge complex that will sit empty. It didn't make any sense. Again, accessibility to current NCR service and medical center in clinic near EPO is a key. Like you just say, you can't move the whole medical community to the new location. It's impossible. Again, you know, I don't speak for myself. I have no financial background. I have my own private practice. I don't do nothing to hospital. But I, I speak for my patient. Uh, that, that's a part of it. Because patient care is what I dedicate my life is for. Again, it's not just me. You have a letter support for, for EPO location from the chief of medical staff, which is the hospital itself, the hospital staff. You know, the whole hospital staff, they endorse EPO point. The GMA, GMS, the three main clinic, they all support this. It's not just three provider that speak against it. It's a lot of medical staff. Again, we do this and the most thing upset me the most is the veteran. It's my colleague that sit in this room that I hope that you can understand a bit more why I'm so passionate about this. Because we cannot promise our veteran things that we cannot deliver 100%. I'm one of you. I will be there with you. But I need for you to understand that we cannot control locally. It's above the governor. I have nothing with the governor. I will support her, but only if the decision is correct for everyone, including you guy. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Wen. Is the, is the video for Ms. Luhon ready?
They told me it was. I have the old sweet saints' day mass across that I really need to prioritize. I've been here since 8:30.
Yes, many, many people have. We're trying to load that video again. Is it able to be loaded? If it's able, can you load it? Okay, they said it's a large document. It's still loading. So they did receive it. They had troubles opening it. It's open, but they, it's still loading. So we're unable to play it at this moment. Would you like to wait until it's fully loaded? Oh, there it is. Okay, ready now. All right. So what would you like us to do, Ms. Luhon? Play this right now? Okay, please play it. All right, for those watching, we don't have audio on this. We can't hear it yet. So our AV is gonna have to work on it. I'm sorry. My apologies. We're not normally accepting video testimony and we have one person on Zoom link, which audio has to control. And so they have a hard time doing both. That's their explanation. My apologies, Ms. Luhon. Can we wait for them to fix it?
How, how long are we waiting? Because the mass next door is at 12:00. Because the mass next door is at twelve ten.
It's up to you. Would you like?
That is my testimony. I, I did that ad lib. I've not prepped. That's no propaganda. That was my testimony in support of one eight four. That is the gist of everything. My experience as the spouse of a veteran. And as the mayor from Malesu said, we're gonna agree to disagree. But again, I am emotional. This is very emotional for us, for, for the veterans and the families of the veterans. You have all heard that saying, some gave all and, and all gave, all gave some and some gave all. There are lots of veterans here. There are thousands on the island, thousands off island, thousands in the sacred grounds that we are honoring and remembering tomorrow. I went through a whole lot with my veteran. My brother-in-law was sent for one day for a knee replacement, not for specialty, to Trippler. So as you know, Dr. King said, I have a dream. We have a dream. We deserve this. I'm not talking about just the hospital. I'm talking not about special interest group. We are special, but so are all of the people of Guam special. Have any of you been in the depths of despair and fear that you curl up into fetal position? Because I have. My sick husband had. My children did. Have any of you been in the depths of illness that you talk about your funeral? We were off island and my husband is talking like that. My son, like I said, twelve years old, had to relocate. We were all displaced. My three-year-old was with a relative, three hours away. My twelve-year-old was here in Guam. And then again, when we had to go back, I brought them back because I wasn't going to go through that again. And he had to go to an intermediate of only sixth and seventh graders that had one thousand students in it. My goodness, it was like a college. I had to drive six hours on Fridays to bring my children back to Palo Alto to be with my husband, to have some semblance of a family. My brother that went to, my brother-in-law that went to Hawaii for his knee replacement, that is not specialty. These people have all gone through the depths of despair and fear. They have been curled up in fetal position. Tomorrow, we go to the resting place of our loved ones and we honor and remember them. Thousands have spilled blood. Thousands more are, are deployed. So I want my video submitted. I want my video played. That is not propaganda. That's my testimony as the spouse of a veteran. And now I go to my priority and I go to attend Old Saints Day Mass. But I request that my video be submitted and played. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Luhon. I, we will definitely share that with all the senators and we will play it today if the audio can get it fixed. Situs Massey for your patience. Thank you.
Of a veteran.
Okay, go. It's on.
Kenyon Sidikas, of the wife of a veteran. Kenyon Sidikas, of the wife. His father's from Malesu. His mother is from Inalahan. He died thirteen years ago on Memorial Day. He was at Desert Storm. I am also the sister of two veterans. My father-in-law, he's nine, one years old. He's also a veteran with the Navy, still alive. And I have two brothers-in-law who are also veterans and still alive, living. My little split the Navy as well. The other one is with the Marines. But I got all of us in here at ten, four, never enough. I came here to support when I heard about this because of my experience as well. Not on that yours path. My husband in two thousand and five had flown by the, and he went to across Stanford to the Palo Alto Veterans Center. So we were there till two thousand five, till two thousand six. Then again, he had to go back out again in two thousand nine, two thousand ten. So I have had that experience of having to leave off island. It's very difficult when you're young. I was only in my thirties then, in my forties. And to have to be here with children, children were very young. I had to leave my fourth grader here with my parents. A teacher in the village took him to school. I had to take my three-year-old with me. And we had to stay with relatives, three hours away. I mean, at my husband's bedside with him, as we all do with our loved ones. Beginning two thousand nine, they told me we couldn't leave. So I had to get my children back to Palo Alto because I'm not going to be back with, have my family separated again. So I had to do that. That was very hard. My son was only twelve years old. He had to go to an intermediate of six and seven graders of one thousand. I mean, the experience that we had there, even when I was there, two thousand five, there was no Fisher House. Had to go to where it's called Hotel. Veterans get home first. After that, families of veterans get on the list. We cross our head that there's a room. Then once you get a room, my goodness, I'm sleeping with a stranger every night. You know how hard that is for us? But you want to have a room over here again so that you can be there for your husband. So yes, we need a complex. But we don't need just a hospital. My, my brother-in-law, the one with the, it's just that, two weeks ago, for one day, they flew him to Hawaii for one day. That's so unbelievable. That they had to fly them for one day to get his needs checked. And, and, uh, where is that in Hawaii? The hospital? Trippler Hospital. I was like, that is unbelievable. He said, yeah, they just fly me out and then they, they will see me one day and then they stay up at home. So, yeah, we need a complex. And it's like you said, it ain't happening. It was horrible out there without family who's liable to be separated. I needed support. And that's why we need a complex. And you know what? You said you have a vision. You said we have a leadership. I think your man hello. Our mother, mother, our sister, you, my darling, I thank you.
Situs Massey. Again, that was, that was a video submitted by Bernie Diego Luhon, who testified earlier. This is her testimony to the governor at a meeting between the governor and veterans last week or over the weekend. Situs Massey. I'd like to recognize the presence of Senator Sabina Perez. Again, thank all my colleagues for staying. And recognize Mr. Benny P. San Nicolás for testimony.
Thank you, Senator. And I'd like to say good morning to all of you senators. My name is Benny Paulino San Nicolás from Inalahan. And I am here in support of Bill one eighty-four dash thirty-seven. And to begin with, Senator Terahy, I want to thank you for the information that you have given earlier regarding why the first round that the governor tried to have a new hospital at Eagle View failed. And you stated that it is not because of your fault or the legislators' fault. And those are the things I'm hearing from the news, but first time I hear directly from you on that issue. So I thank you for that information. I also would like to start off by thanking our good, honorable Governor Liu for continuing her endeavor in trying to provide the best health providers or in give, or trying to build a medical complex and with that, the new hospital. Currently, also I, through your questioning, Senator Terahy, again, I want to thank you because I got to know now where is it, the Agaga is, right? In Mangillo. And I want you to know that I also attended the governor's informational presentation in Mangillo or the Guam Community Complex several days ago. So I try my best to get as accurate information as I can. So I want all of you to know also that I believe in our governor. I trust our governor. Through her action, we can all see it. This is very sincere in trying to build a new hospital. Why? Because she knows it's the best for the people of Guam. Right? We all know that. And also, Senator Terahy, thank you that I don't have to convince you to support Bill one eight four dash thirty-seven because you have already told us that earlier again. The only thing I need to do now is to convince you that the location is, the best location is where she's proposing, in Mangillo or Barigada combination. So if you will bear with me, I will do my best to convince you with that. My good mayor from Inalahan, Tony Charclav, had done an excellent job to try to convince all of you that the location is the best location for the people of Guam, especially for people like me, Malesu, Umatak, Talofofo, Zonia, Hagan, Santarita. Those are the things that made me even trust the governor more. Why? She's thinking of us, not just for the doctors or the people from Tamuning. So senators, we all know, and I believe all of you from the past testimony in the first round of the Eagle Views attempt of the governor to have it built there. I believe, unless I'm mistaken through what I was hearing from all of you or most of you or through the media, that all of you are in support for a new hospital. Correct? May I see the hands from you who agree of a new hospital? Let me see your hands. So you, can I?
Mr. Sir.
Good. Now, and I believe I'm right. I just want to make sure that I'm right with that.
Yeah, that's something.
So
to clarify also, there's no, I have heard no proposal from any senator to not build a new hospital.
Please just bear with me. I don't want you to mislead me and my train of thought because I'm easily distracted. So please, just bear with me. And my, my, my intent here, not to offend you, not to offend anybody, but to help you. Help me. Help the governor. Convince all of you that we do need a new hospital desperately. It's overdue for over fifty years. We all know that. So please, that's what I'm trying to do, to convince all of you. Because you know in the first round, you are all my elected senators. I also trust all of you. But when it fell, I said, oh, my gosh, I'm disappointed. So this time, I want to make sure that I come and do my part in convincing you that yes, we do need a hospital. But that's easier now because she already revealed that she's convinced of a new hospital. Now, all the main thing I need to do now is convince all of you that the location in Barigada and Mangillo is the best for the people of Guam. My good mayor again from Inalahan, Tony, have justified that. Right? I'm gonna do my best to justify that too. And yes, he is correct. You look at the time it takes to go from Inalahan to Guam Memorial Hospital. It's much longer to get there than to Mangillo. The traffic issue is another justification. Okay, those are very valid, realistic justifications. The good doctor here have some valid points that are need to be considered and a lot of them I disagree. But there are some issue that I agree. And not necessarily just agreeing on that, but what I hope he would do is find solution because that's what we're trying to do, find solutions. So that's solution and I will hopefully address that later. But my main goal now is to let you know why we need a new hospital. Why? It's desperately needed. Guam Memorial Hospital is not acceptable the way it is now. So some of the reasons why we need a hospital. Number one, not only because of its condition, the off-island travel. I, my family and a lot of people from Guam have to go off-island for medical care because Guam Memorial Hospital don't have that. They don't have the caliber or the specialty of doctors that Guam need. They don't have that. You were saying that earlier. So what do we do? In the meantime, I have to spend thousands and thousands of dollars for airfare, ground transportation, hotel accommodations because the Guam Memorial Hospital is not acceptable. And other specialists here in Guam that we need. Don't get me wrong, there were lots of good doctors in Guam. Lot of good doctors. Quality doctors also, but not enough. And most of it because the things you mentioned earlier, it's not attractive enough for them to be here. However, that's the reason why we need a new hospital. So that I don't have to travel to Manila, Hawaii, or the States, California, Arizona, or wherever the other people of Guam go. That is why we need a new hospital to helpfully lessen my need and other people of Guam to go off-island. That's number one justification, why we need a new hospital. The new hospital, my friend, doctor will help attract good doctors also and specialists. I do believe that, that it will help them come and will find solution and entice them to come. That will be our job of our elected officials, our good governor and all the people of Guam that are being negatively impacted by this current medical facility we have in Guam and professional care. We need to find ways to bring all these specialists that we need. We cannot say it's too much that we cannot do. I believe that we can do anything we want to do. We have good people, good senators, very capable to be able to do that. I believe in their abilities and their capacity. They have, they will. They can do it, and I believe they do. So that issue about not being able to get the top quality specialist here is impossible, it is not impossible, very possible, very doable. So what? Again, why? The next question is why do I go off-island? Not only because of the hospital is not acceptable or lack of professional specialists here in Guam. The other reason is the facilities that we go to. A perfect example, I do not know how many of you have gone to Honolulu, Queens Hospital, Strab Hospital. Most of the people from Guam have gone there. Why? Because of the insurance companies that make that possible for us with our government of Guam. Okay, that's why we go there. Why do we go to Manila again? Because of the insurance. But the main reason is because the facility and the doctors are top caliber there. For example, San Luke Hospital in Manila, Benefacio, Makati, or Kason City. You know, I used to go to, and my family mostly to Hawaii, to Queens and Strab for medical care for the past 50 years. However, because all the negative things I've been hearing about the Philippines, Manila, you know, foreign country that are negative. About 20 some years ago, through my relatives that have gone there and tried out San Luke Asian Hospital. They told me it's very good. So about 20 years ago, I went and tried it for myself and my family and I discovered that these people are really telling the truth. San Luke provide excellent service. You find almost all the specialists you have there. The facility, state of the art. I believe they're one of the top 10 hospitals in the world with that able to provide, you know, they're very good. But the other issue, a reason why I go and a lot of people I believe go to San Luke in Manila Hospital because Select Care, Calvo's Insurance, they have the, what do you call this? Those are referral office there, the insurance referral office there. Those people that work for Select Care Insurance and Calvo's Insurance, they are very, very good. They're, they provide excellent service for the people of Guam that go there. The service that they provide for me and my family and other people, they help us coordinate our appointments to see all the specialties that we need. They help us coordinate the lab work that we need to do or are required for us to do. And on top of that, you know, Select Care, they, they, they really do their best to make it as doable as possible and convenient as possible for. And I am not advocating or trying to promote Select Care, please. I'm just saying that they had given and I believe continue to provide that excellent service through their insurance. They have, they have people there within the hospital in San Luke providing that service. I heard that the other insurance do provide that, have that, but I never tried because I'm mostly using Select Care. And I'm glad that I am again, Select Care is again providing that service to us. And again, thank to the senators and the governor for making it possible about this health insurance through Select Care, Calvo. I haven't seen it, I haven't gotten my card yet, but I'm a member. I'm looking forward to a good service again from Select Care on this issue. But back to why I'm here and helping Senator Tolarri convince you that we need the hospital in Mangillo and Barigada. If I, my mayor here and I am not convince you yet before I leave, please ask me any question you want for me to further justify that, why Mangillo is the best. And I will stay here for another hour to help convince you if I have to, if I haven't convinced you yet, and my mayor of Inalahan. So the other issue that I want to recommend, this will be mostly recommendation now, is aligned with healthcare. So when we go off-island to Manila, we go off-island to the States. Government of Guam also have medical offices to help us with ground transportation, hotel accommodation like in Hawaii. You know, my experience in Hawaii with ground transportation and the Guam medical office there was excellent. I never use it for the past 20 years since I've been going to Manila because it's cheaper, more convenient, the time and everything. So that's why I had been going to Manila for the last 20 years, except when after COVID hit. We all know that there are so many restrictions going to the Philippines during COVID time. So during COVID time, my family and I started going to Hawaii. I'm not Hawaii, California. So we established our team of doctors there again in Northern California. So my recommendation is, senators, and I hope the administration and I know Governor Liu also will be listening there and I hope that she will also take appropriate action to address it. So senators, my recommendation is, I don't see any medical office in Northern California like San Francisco. I believe Hawaii still have it. The Philippines supposed to have one, but the medical referral service in the Philippines need to be renovated or upgraded and improved because, well, in my experience, it's not acceptable. And if you have any clarification for that, I'm happy to talk to you on that on the side because I do not know who's running that and I don't want to offend anybody like I said. But I want it improved so that it's more convenient for us that have to go off-island. And why? Because we all know that it will take at least five years or over five years if this new hospital or medical complex ever get built. Right? So in the meantime, we need to be doing this now continuously to help me and other people of Guam when they go off-island for medical treatment. And believe me, we do not want to be going off-island because it's very expensive. But our health is everything, you all know that. If you don't have the health, you're nothing. So please address that and see how you can make it better for having an office in San Francisco or Northern California. Because I know they have something in Los Angeles and somewhere there in Anaheim, but not in San Francisco. So I want to, I'm going over my beautiful notes here and I want to make sure I don't miss anything. So I believe I said most of the major points that I am here to do. So please, senators, I ask you to please help me, help the governor and our people of Guam get the best care possible for all of us, including yourself because you're going to be needing it too. So please pass this bill 184-37 unanimously and promptly because it's overdue. So I just want to thank all of you for giving me this privilege and I look forward to your favorable actions. Thank you.
Sidoos Masih, Mr. Senecolis, and to all of the panel who testified. This is our first panel. Thanks again to Mr. Leon Guerrero, the mayors from Maleso and Inalahan, Mr. Camacho, Ms. Luhon, Dr. Wen, representatives from the ancestral lands and the land management, and Mr. Senecolis, Sidoos Masih. I want to repeat what we said in the very beginning of this hearing and that is to assure everyone that no one here in the legislature, as far as I have heard or seen in actual bills, is proposing to renovate the current hospital. The legislature has already acted and authorized the building of a new hospital on government of Guam land. The issue is that there was no government of Guam land chosen to build the hospital on. The land that was first chosen was Department of Defense land, but they were not willing to disclose the details of that agreement. Then they chose the Guam ancestral lands and that's why we are here today. And Ipau Point is Chamor Land Trust land. So all of those choices requires legislative action above the existing legislative action that we have agreed to build a new hospital. We've agreed to fund the building of a new hospital. We've authorized lease to own, I mean leaseback type of financing for a new hospital and many other things. But this is why we're here today, not because no one here is convinced to build a new hospital. We want a new hospital as soon as possible. We were there when the Army Corps told us we've got five years left on our current hospital with investment. And we have seen that the investment has been short. So we are really on borrowed time. I think all the senators agree as to that. We are also asking and have asked for clarification on what is reported in Matrix's, the Matrix Company's medical complex proposal to be a VA facility. For stories, they talk about 50 beds, but other than that, we have no documents, no clarification as to whether this is a facility that is going to be an office building, a clinic or an additional hospital to the hospital we're building or a separate wing of the hospital. We don't have clarification as to what part of this the VA is, it's a VA, is it a VA facility, a VA owned, operated, managed or built facility, funded? That's what we want to know. That's our legislative role, is really the cost of the new hospital. I want to know if there are partners to build it, what those are so that we can adjust ourselves in that regard as well. And so we are still asking for information that we, we are still waiting for information in regards to those negotiations with the federal government, particularly the VA. And it, it's not clear, we cannot control what the VA is going to cover or not cover. So we'd like clarification of that. We cannot control what insurance companies will cover or not cover. For example, they are covering now that we go off-island for certain things. They will cover that because it's cheaper for them as opposed to doing it here when we have some of that technology available to us here. Those again are factors outside of this discussion at this moment. We are, and I, I want to thank the mayors. I think particularly the Matrix study shows for Inalahan, if we use, first of all, Adakau, they've testified is further north than Eagles Field. But if we use the Eagles Field property in our analysis, Eagles Field is definitely shorter drive time to Inalahan than Ipau. It's shorter to Inalahan, Jonya, Mangillo, Barigada. But Ipau is closer according to the Matrix study in drive time. Or actually, the Matrix study makes no distinction in drive time between Ipau and Eagles Field for Maleso, Humatak, Aget, Ascen, Pidi, Maina. But if you look at the, but if you look at the Google drive times, it's definitely shorter from Maleso and Yamadec to Ipau than it is to get to Eagles Field. And I know, so the mayors have testified as to traffic that is not analyzed in the Eagles, I mean, in the Matrix study. I, I think there are things that need to be addressed immediately, including the ambulance situation, the bypass situation from Naval Hospital, those have to be taken care right now while we build a hospital. Those need to be addressed immediately as well as the North and Southern clinics that are not fully operational, they're not fully meeting their mandates despite the federal funds that fund those clinics. Open it up to senators. Senator Burnett, do you have any questions or comments for this panel? I know some of them have left, but some might be outside.
I'm just here to listen today and I thank everyone for their very thoughtful testimony. It's also good to see the veterans here and I think from where I'm sitting, I just, I just want to be careful. I think that maybe you've been overpromised some things that, that I'm not sure we as a government are going to be able to deliver. And I think that's why we need all of the facts in front of us. And I don't think it's very productive when the governor does this blame game where she's blaming the legislature for the failure to execute the Eagles Field lease when all we did was invite her to come to the table and show us the details. So I know that obviously this has become a very emotionally charged issue. And as someone who is from the South, I'm very familiar with the challenges that us Southern people face. But I also know that, because I used to stay down in Inalahan, every morning I would drive past the Southern Public Health Community Clinic, which when it was built was supposed to provide a lot of the very services that we're now seeking to find in the, either of the sites for the proposed hospital and/or medical complex. So I think haste makes waste and it's clear to me that the administration is kind of running downhill with this medical complex. And I understand the urgency, the need to build a new hospital. Again, all 15 senators are on the same page about the need, the urgent need to build a new hospital. I think where we differ and where we depart, where we disagree is on fantasy versus fact, a healthcare future that our people can afford. And I think it's, it has to be more intelligent than saying, if you build it, they will come. And if you guys know the movies, that's from the movie Field of Dreams. This is not Field of Dreams. If we build it, they will come. What if they don't? Many of us, I have never gone off-island for medical care, but many of you have testified that you have. And I think the biggest difference about our island and the places that you're going to receive this off-island medical care is the population. These places like the Philippines, like California, I mean, obviously, I know you know this, that they have much bigger populations that drive the specialists to be in these areas. And so my, my, my fear, for me, there are two different issues going on here. The location and whether or not we build a complex or a hospital. And I, I believe that we can reach an agreement on both of these issues if we're honest and if we're forthcoming with all the information that is before us. But that being said, I, I do know that the veterans are a group that, and I've talked to many veterans, they're a group that feels overlooked and neglected. And I commend the governor for discussing these plans with the veterans. And obviously she has got you guys really wound up and sent you guys down here. And obviously, she has got you guys really wound up and sent you guys down here. But again, I want to be careful in what we can promise and what we can deliver. And I think that's where we're at today. So again, I'm very thankful for your very thoughtful testimony. And I'm taking it all in and considering all the information and the testimony that's being provided today. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Fisher.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I kind of approach this issue in a sense because I believe in government. I believe in the possibility of government. And I believe that government can do good things. And I believe that government can do great things. I believe in the possibility of the people of Guam building this medical complex. We have to remember, in my opinion, that this is not for us. We should not, must not, cannot focus on ourselves. We are talking about generations who are yet unborn that we have an obligation to take care of. We shouldn't limit ourselves in what we can expect of ourselves. So that's my philosophical approach to this. I believe we can do this. I look around Hagatya, and I see the tremendous improvements that resulted over the last several administrations where the old DOA was torn down, put up a new museum. Hagatya is vital, wonderful. It is a place of pride that we point at because we did that together. I think we can build this medical complex. I have confidence that we can build this medical complex. Excuse me. But what I do worry about is that I worry about the legislature intruding on an executive function. We have to be careful about that. We must, as they say these days, we must stay in our lane. We legislate. We don't get into the weeds. That's for the executive branch. You guys go build the hospital. You build the medical facility. Look to us to help you do it. It's an executive function. So that's one of the ways I look at it. I do not want to step into Atalup's lane. Atalup doesn't want to step into our lane. So I worry about that. But I am absolutely confident we can do this. It's not a pipe dream. It's a necessity. It is for generations to come and are yet unborn. So thank you very much. And I wish us all the very best of luck in this. Thank you.
Sido Smasi, Senator Fisher, and my apologies, Senator Taijiri, but we have to reset the audio. It will take us just a couple minutes. Please be patient. We're going to reset that audio. It can only go for a certain number of hours, and then we have to reset it. So please reset the audio. Thank you.